Allison Spillman, Hatlorge Representative.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District Representative.
Judy Lee Ryvanna, District Representative.
Graham Page, Miller District Representative.
Chuck Pace, Representative.
Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer.
Pat McGraw, Assistant Superintendent.
Chandra Hayes, Assistant Superintendent.
Helen Dunn, Public Affairs and Strategic Communications Officer.
Christine Thompson, Clerk of War.
Christine Diggs, Chief Technology Officer.
All right, wonderful to see everyone on the dais. Thank you. Next, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, where which stands, one nation, under one individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Next, we have the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
A move we approve the agenda for tonight?
No second.
Move by Ms. Osborne, seconded by Mr. Page. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No one opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda.
A move that we approve the consent agenda for tonight.
Second.
Move by Mr. Page, seconded by Ms. Spillman. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Nope. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No one opposed? All right, consent agenda passes. Next, we have announcements, 6.0.
So, thank you, Ms. Lee. I just had a couple of things to say. One was, I had a great time last night at Henley Middle School. They had a production, they did two productions from the Henley Theaters Production Company, Game of Tieras and Ten Ways to Survive the Zombie Apocalypse. And I'm telling you, I mean, it was a dreary night. People don't really drive on nights like that, but the entire, like, half of the cafeteria that they had chairs out for was full. The kids were great. You could tell they put a lot of effort and a lot of practice into both of the plays. It was a lot of fun. And I had two school visits this week. Stony Point Elementary School on Tuesday and Ivy Elementary School on Wednesday. And when I visited Stony Point, I asked the principal, Maureen Jensen, to if I could talk to teachers about closing opportunity gaps for students. And lots of times, we talk about words like opportunity gap, but we don't necessarily define them. And an opportunity gap occurs when some students do not have the same chances for a good education because of differences such as family wealth, racial bias, their neighborhood, and their background. Simply put, it means that not everyone gets the same help and opportunities in school. And so, I had the chance to talk with teachers about how they work on closing that gap and make things more fair for students. I talked to a third grade teacher named Addison Holmes. She shared that closing the opportunity gap begins with establishing the same foundation and expectations for skill attainment for all learners. It involves considering student data through more than one lens so that we can see all, see that all students achieve while they achieve differently and show different strengths. And then you build on those strengths and the student structure for learning to help them learn the curriculum. Librarian Julia McGill tackles the opportunity gap by ensuring access to literature for all students. And there were a number of things she does, but one that I really appreciated was, rather than predetermining all book selections for students, Julia polls all students in the school to see what they would prefer to read about and stocks the library accordingly. And she's seen her number, you know, the numbers of students using books in the library just skyrocket over the years. And finally, Lynn Leathers, a second grade teacher, closes the opportunity gap by building her students' background knowledge so that the vocabulary words that students must master to comprehend their reading are not abstract. Lynn talked about a virtual field trip she and Mia Shan provided for Lynn's students. They made a live visit to Longwood Gardens in Pennsylvania to tour the gardens. It's 220 miles away, but the students did the field trip live on streaming. And so, when she wanted her students to know vocabulary around the plant lifecycle, they would, they could see and ask questions about a bulb, a flower bulb, rather than just having it as an abstract concept that they were trying to learn. At Ivy Elementary School, I wanted to find teachers and talk with teachers who are always on standard. Whenever you go in their classroom, they're teaching the grade level standard at the level that it should be taught. I talked to third grade teacher Michael Weiss, and he advised me that it is about being disciplined, sticking to pacing guides, and cycling back to reteach skills that students need extra help with while staying on pace. And he uses warmups to do that. And he's a novice teacher, and he felt that that ACPS curriculum and pacing guides is an essential foundation, and then he can be autonomous as long as he's following those guides. PE teacher Matthew Cruz had a very straightforward response. He said, "I follow the pacing guides that Jay Thomas gives me." And we talked about some other things. He uses the same method. He observes and assesses to determine which skills need more time, and then he cycles back to a particular skill. And finally, Rachel Montgomery, first grade teacher, emphasized planning ahead and optimizing instructional time to prioritize teaching and learning that is useful to build essential skills while minimizing busy work. She said she wants every minute in the classroom to be impactful, and that's how she stays on pace. And it's important for all the, for teachers to teach to standards because that ensures fairness in the curriculum across the school, the county, and the state. And it really is about having common goals with students and families about what we expect them to learn and then getting them to where they need to be. So I really appreciate those visits, and I think they exemplify all the really great work that our teachers and support staff do, and I learn something new every time I go out to a school. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Are there other, is there any other?
Yeah, I just wanted to tell you I had a nice visit, a nice invitation from the Scottsville PTO to join them last week, and I really just enjoyed hearing about the things they're working on to uplift the students. It was great, and the teachers, too. They really care so much about the teachers there.
I guess I should mention also that I visited the Learning Lab at Monticello a couple of weeks back with Madeline Michael there. It was really great. My favorite part of this job, I think, is speaking with students. It was just really, they gave me their candor, which I think is a real gift. So I recommend anyone else on the board who wants to go out. I know that Madeline is always open to having school members out there. All right. So next, we'll have public comment. Ellen, I believe you were doing that?
Yes. So, "We invite and actively seek the public's input in matters relevant to school board governance and provide time in our business meetings to hear from our residents and community members. During public comment, we expect respectful and on-topic comments. Disruptive behavior from speakers or from members of the public in attendance will not be tolerated. Anyone who willfully disrupts this meeting in a manner that prevents or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting may be ejected by the chair. Individuals and/or organizations wishing to speak during public comment must sign up prior to the meeting. Sign up is available online beginning at 9:00 a.m. on the Monday of the meeting week until 2:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Sign up is also available by contacting the clerk directly. Public testimony guidelines are as follows. Please adhere to the following protocols. State your name and address or your voting district. And that's basically so we know which one of us is your representative. Address the comments to the school board as a whole. Limit the comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or school division operations. Give written statements and other supporting material to the clerk. If you are unable to complete the presentation in the time allotted, a copy of supporting materials will be provided to school board members. Three minutes will be allowed for each presenter to speak. A commenter will be required to discontinue the comment after three minutes. Color-coded light or card system is used to time the presentations. The yellow light means the speaker is two minutes into the presentation, and the red light means the speaker is at the three-minute limit of the presentation and must wrap up. To maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or any other audible form of support or non-support be used. If members of the public wish to show their support for a speaker, they may stand or raise their hands. When multiple comments on the same topic have been presented, the chair may request additional comments on the topic be limited to those that have new information to present. Debate and dialogue with the school board are not allowed. Use of projection system is reserved for staff." Tonight, we have two speakers, one in person and one on Zoom. The first one is in person, Mr. Bob Garland.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Garland.
My name is Bob Garland, and my wife and I have lived in the Jack Jewett District for almost 56 years. In our immediate family, we work around a total of three academic calendars, one of which is Alamoah County. I also volunteer for several community organizations, one of which is the Jefferson Swim League, which is the summer swim league for over 2,200 children in central Virginia. I happen to be the one that makes the schedule for the 17 teams that make up the Jefferson Swim League. For that, I have to consider six academic calendars, including Alamoah County. I'm sure you can understand why I follow Alamoah County calendar development rather closely. I realize my situation is a little unusual, but I can't imagine that I'm the only person or JSL is the only organization in Alamoah County that depends on receiving the school calendar in a timely manner, especially when it appears that you're considering a possible change to the start and end dates. Parents have to plan for childcare, summer camps, vacations, and other activities. Children's sports organizations like ours have to have schedules and locations reserved far in advance of their seasons. Because of the size of the Jefferson Swim League, other organizations wait for us to finalize our schedule before setting their own. Traditionally, we have set our championship date in September for the following July. Because of the uncertainty this year, we've had to wait until after this meeting to finalize the date for our championship this coming July, which now is only six months away. I ask, number one, that you approve the 2024-25 schedule as presented this evening. And then I'm going to leave you with two requests for the future. And that is, make a decision to leave the calendar start and end dates the same for 2025-26, which is my personal preference. Or if you're going to change, give us at least 18 to 24 months' public notice before changing. Just don't leave us hanging. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Garland.
You're welcome.
Next, we have one on Zoom, Ms. Bridget Rogers.
Chair Lee, our Zoom participant has not arrived in our queue. And she was to arrive at 6:30.
Okay. Then we will, if, I assume that's not her beeping in?
I'm sorry.
I assume that's not her beeping in?
No, it's not. Sorry.
Then we will, we'll just move on from that then.
Okay.
That concludes public comment, and Ms. Rogers wants to send us her comments by email?
Yeah, I will communicate with her.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have school board or superintendent business.
Pardon me?
No, we had announcements, and then we now have school board.
Oh, no ma'am. I don't think we had anything for tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to 9.0, the work sessions. Starting with 9.1, the school year calendar. Basically, this had been in our consent agenda, but I wanted to be able to hear the public comment before we discussed it and made a decision. So first, we can start out with a motion and a second around the whatever moves the, a board member around the calendar presentation from last time, and then we can have discussion about it. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the 24-25 school year calendar as presented last time?
A move we accept the 24-25 school year calendar as presented at the last meeting.
Second.
So move by Ms. Osborne, seconded by Ms. Spillman, and now we'll open it up for any discussion. So I just had a few points that I wanted to make. I appreciated Mr. Garland and the notes that we've gotten. We haven't gotten a ton of feedback since the last meeting, so I'm really, depending on the information that we got the last meeting about feedback that had been gathered by staff. I will say that there are three compelling things out of all the feedback from that presentation and others that we've gotten. The first is that I have heard compelling evidence to move up the dates. There are various things that, I won't go into all of them now, but, you know, including the semester end before winter break makes sense. There were a lot of parts of that that made sense, aligning with other calendars that might also have chosen that for that reason. The second compelling thing to me is to wait to not do it this year because I do think that we have a lot on our plates right now, and I think that moving it, it would be too much disruption for this year. And then the third compelling thing is to move up the calendar process. And I know that Jamie had mentioned that last time, so I just wanted to voice my support for that. And I looked at the past five years, and mostly we do vote on the calendar in January. Half the time in the second meeting, which we're in now. Some of the times in the first meeting in January, and in 2019, we did it in the December meeting. I think for the purposes of families, various organizations, the thing that has changed for me is that in the past five years, when we were doing it in late January, when we were okaying it, and we never heard from anybody. Now, it seems like, since all the other divisions around us have moved, you know, that has changed for us. So to me, it just makes, if it's possible for staff to do it so that we can at least vote in December, I think that that would be really helpful to our families. So those are just my thoughts. And we can have a vote now. Christine, can we have a roll call vote on that, please?
This is to accept the 24-25 calendar. Ms. Spillman?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Pace?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you very much. Next, we have 9.2, which is the AHS Second Floor Connector Project. Lindsay Snoddy will be speaking with us about this.
All right, good evening. I'm Lindsay Snoddy, Director of the Billing Services Department, and tonight, we're going to take you through schematic design for the Alamoah High School's Second Floor Connector Project. We'll start with a project overview, then show you some elevations, touch on the budget, and then the schedule for this project. And again, touching on our vision and mission, we are excited that this project will contribute to all goals of thriving students, affirming and empowering communities, and equitable and transformative resources. And we've been before you a lot with architectural schematic design, so wanted to point back to policy for a minute. For policy, FBA facility design, we bring the AE Selection Committee to the board if the fee for the project is expected to exceed $100,000. And then policy, FA, Building and Naming Facilities, the school board, by policy, has to approve the schematic design for the facility and design development before we proceed to construction document phase. So we just wanted to point to those policy references. The Second Floor Connector Project was identified as a high priority during the Alamoah High School and Western Alamoah High School Master Plan that was completed in 2023. This was one of the projects that rose to the top, and the funding for this project is coming from the high school renovation funding that's been allocated to us. The construction budget for the project is 4.5 million. And I'm here excited to introduce Josh Bowers, who is with Crabtree Warbuck, and he's going to take us through the design.
Great, thank you, Lindsay. Welcome, everybody. Glad to see all your smiling faces. We're going to, we're going to run through the most complex 6,600-square-foot project you've ever seen in your life. Is everybody ready?
Yeah.
Awesome. So, so starting off, just to get you familiarized with where the project is going to happen. So this is aerial of the, of the high school, of Alamoah High School. You can see the main entrance off to the, kind of the bottom right. Then you have the auditorium. What our goal is of this project is to connect the two, two-story classroom wings that you have on this piece, which is adjacent to your auxiliary gyms. You can see the two wings and your auxiliary gym. That red section is where we're looking to put the addition, which will be above current occupied space and connect the two two-story wings. It's maybe a little less than awesome for students and teachers to be able to get around if they're up on the second floor, and they've got to go down to the first floor, go across, and then go back up to the second floor. So this is going to help. Another, another big positive is the addition of classrooms, which are in desperate need, as you know, in the facility. I believe Mr. Warbuck is going to be talking about your other, your other building next. So looking at the floor plan, what our plan is, it is to connect the two two-story wings with this addition. So this would be a connector with the corridor, and this will include six classrooms, a teacher workroom, and the corridor connection. So going from left to right, what we're going to do is we're going to do a small modification of that, of that large classroom that you have at the end of the classroom wing to be able to create a corridor, a corridor piece. The yellow is the, is the actual corridor connection. This is that we have a group of five classrooms, and one classroom, one, a single classroom, and the teacher workroom. Some things that, as we're going through the design, that we've been able to achieve is some big things of security, is that when you're, when you, when you do stand, let me see if, ah, look at that, you can talk. So as you stand here in the corner, this is an opportunity for folks to be able to look down both ends of the corridor from one point. So this really does create a great sightline to be able to see in multiple locations from one spot. The, so this, this does allow us to go from the second floor across and down to the other portion of the second floor to avoid the traffic jam that you currently have on, that you have on the first floor. Some things we're able to do is to get daylight in all of the classrooms. So the, so we are going to have viewable and daylight in these four. We're going to be able to achieve daylight in this room with a, with a skylight and or a solar tube. We're also going to be able to have windows in this classroom, and then we are going to have windows going down the corridor here. So we have a lot of opportunity here for, for natural daylight. Not only have we had an amazing time working with staff, but also we've had an opportunity to engage with students and with teachers. Some things that we heard was, was, was to try to get as much daylight in the, in the spaces as possible. The teachers have asked for potty, which is always a good thing. So we're looking to add and put a potty there in the teacher workroom. Of course, everybody wanted a Starbucks kiosk. I just don't think that's quite in our budget, but we said we'd look at it and see if there was a possibility in the future. So the, and then also, the request was, is could we have one, one of the two, you know, of the groupings of classrooms to have a partition that could fall back and make one larger space, whether that's a teacher meetings or a couple of classes want to do some collaboration? So we have, so one of the, one of the two classrooms, this will have a floating partition that will fold back to be able to make this one, one big open space. So we've heard a lot of positives, I said, from staff. That's a little bit of a blow up. Also, we've been able to meet with the, with the county code official to walk through the project, because this is, is a challenging project from the standpoint of, we're adding square footage to the building. We're doing it over, over occupied space. The building is not fully sprinklered, so the, so how are we, what are we going to do to improve safety? And I believe we received a very positive response back from the code official that they feel that what we're doing here is actually going to improve safety and security and the overall feel of the building as opposed to being a detriment. So how are we going to do this? That's a great question. So let's talk about phasing. So the first, the first thing that we're going to do is there's two large rooftop units that actually feed the auxiliary gym that we are going to be demolishing. So one of the big challenges that we have with this is, is when are we going to do this project? Because what we don't want to do is we don't want to be putting steel over top of occupied space and just have a roof separating it. So the, so looking at the rooftop units, what we believe we're finding is that doing smaller units are going to be able to get the, we're going to be able to order the units and get them in time so that way, when we get into the fall, that we're not going to have, that we're going to still have air conditioning and also ventilation in the auxiliary gym. That is our plan, and that's, that's the goal that we're setting for the entire team. Some things we talked about during, during design is, how are, how are we going to do this? So, you know, are we going to tear off the roof and, you know, and that, the ceiling's going to come out and all the piece, and then put the structure in over top of the existing load-bearing walls? And, oh, how are we going to do this over two months of a period of time? So we sent us some challenges to our team and said, okay, we got, we have to figure this out. How, how can we do this without having an impact? And, oh, by the way, if we don't have the roof on, how do we keep water from coming in all summer long when that's, when that's going to happen? It's definitely a challenge. So what our team believes is, and this is the goal that we're setting, is to actually design the columns and the structure to go over top and alongside of the existing building. So what you can see here is we're actually going to be putting the columns adjacent to the existing structure. We're going to actually keep the existing roof in place and do small penetrations down to the load-bearing walls, and then build the structure over top of the existing roof. And what that allows us to do is have that roof in place the entire time of the, of the project and build our structure over top of it. So this is a section kind of cut through the building, and this is going to show you a little bit better of how our plan is. So the blue is the columns on the outside. I said, then what our plan is to put large steel that's going to go across. It's going to, it's going to be buried on by the, by the corridor wall and by the other exterior wall, and then going into the auxiliary gym. And then I said, what we're going to do is then build the second story above that piece. And what that allows us to do is, over the summer, is to put the steel in, put the decking in, and pour the concrete floor this summer before any of the students come back so that way, we have a safety factor for anything that's going to happen above that. So the, and it's with the, with the scope of work, we do believe that this can happen this summer so that we're not doing this inside of, you know, we're not trying to put steel over top of occupied space. Now, some things that we've talked with both teachers and staff, is there going to be noise? Yes, there's going to be noise. This is still a construction project, and anybody who's going to do this, any contractors who do this is going to be, a contractor who's worked in schools before. But there's always a factor that there is, there is going to be time where there's going to be noise, whether it's in the classrooms below or adjacent to that. But everybody's going to do their best to manage that and to not have a disruption of educational program during the process. So as we move into the fall, is to finish up the exterior walls, put the, the smaller roof choice on, the roof decking, and then have the entire structure under roof by, by the end of the fall so that way, we can be doing the interior finishes, putting the windows and things like that over, over the wintertime, and have this entire project complete by March of '25. And you're saying, wow, that seems like a long time. March of '25 is like tomorrow. So, but the, you know, but we feel that after, here we are still in schematic design, but we feel solid that this is a great plan, and this is a plan that we are moving forward with to be able to get, to have the least amount of disruption and get this done for, as much done over the summer. as much done over the summertime. So I know what you're saying, Josh, what is this going to look like? That's a great question. So on this building, this is a beautiful building, and you have a lot of different materials. So we have a lot to work with. You have brick, EPIS, which is drive-it. You have metal panel, you have a lot of different things. Replace some windows, some windows are more mature in age, but you have a lot of different things to be able to work with. So as we're looking at just the courtyard itself, and it is an enclosed courtyard, so you can see all the different materials that you have, that we have available. So we ran a number of different scenarios to staff and show this to some of the teachers and administration and said, here's some different options. This was the greatest, received the greatest amount of support. So this was the, so what you see here is the existing facade of the building below. Okay, so this is that one-story existing space. And then so what we're doing is we're going to be constructing the second floor above that, so we're going to have brick that is complementary to the existing brick. Those steel columns we talked about being on the exterior of the building, we're going to wrap those, so you can see these brick columns kind of going up to two stories. We're going to have windows. The windows for the classrooms will have, will be operable, and they'll be complementary to the existing windows that you've been putting inside of the building. So what you can see here is the, these are actually the existing windows on the first floor. You can see the windows on the second floor are very complementary in size and proportion. And then going across the top, we're going to have a metal panel, which you have that, if you've been inside of the courtyard, right outside your library, you have some metal panel. You also have some EPIS going along with the adjacent side. We believe that metal panel is a longer-lasting, more durable material. And so what we're showing here is that across the top is that metal panel. So here's a perspective of what this could look like. You can see the existing two-story element here, you know, with the brick, the punch point openings. This is running EPIS, they're drive-it, going across the top of the parapet. So we're showing a metal panel, which will be complementary in size and proportion. And then it said this is the other two-story piece. So you can see here that we're, what we're trying to do is we're trying to be very complementary and be sympathetic to the architecture that is already there, and, but also kind of give it as much of a more modern element as possible. So again, this is a 6,600-square-foot addition, and I would say that in talking with our team, this is one of the most complicated 6,600-square-foot projects that we've done. And we are doing some select renovations. We talked about doing that corridor, modifying the one classroom and creating the corridor. So we have a little bit of renovation that we're going to be doing. Project budget is about 4.5 million, and right now, our project budget is roughly $4.1 million. It is $606 a square foot. So again, part of this is that we're doing a lot over the summer, and we are doing this, you know, this is a challenging project, so we are anticipating a higher cost per square foot, but we do believe that this project is going to be, is going to be lower than what the budget presented to us is for construction. So right now, we are wrapping up schematic design. Over the next two months, we're going to be going into design development and construction documents. Our goal is to wrap up this project by mid-March, and we're going to be requesting to go out to bid with this project. And part of the goal is it is to, is to get the contractor on board and get materials and get them immobilized, and as soon as school lets out, we're ready to rock and roll. We have materials on site, and things are being ordered. Do as much work over the summer as possible, so that way, when the students come back in the fall, that we can continue on the space below and the adjacent spaces with as minimal disruption as possible. And what we're asking the contractor is to complete this project in March of 2025 and have full occupancy and final completion by the end of March of 2025. This is my favorite slide. So are there any questions anybody has, anything we'd like to go back over? Yes, sir.
So you guys are building this on top of the original school, which was built in '52, '53, and I wonder if we're sure what we're dealing with. Is it something, have you done like test boards or something like that to figure out what you're actually laying this is on top of?
You mean as far as the bearing walls themselves? Yes, our structural engineer is very confident that the walls that we are putting on are going to be able to support. It said if you go back, the majority of the actual structure weight is going to be on this column, and it's going to be a shared support between the exterior wall, which is a bearing wall, and the corridor wall, which is a bearing wall. So we're actually, it's really thirds, you know, is when you're looking at the overall amount of weight. But our structural engineer feels very confident that what we're proposing to do is going to be able to support the structure.
And you guys are going into the '91 addition. So that's, yeah. But the one other thing I thought of, and this is a very minor thing, but I believe the windows down the first floor painted, the trim is painted red. Is that something, is that, are you going to match that?
Our goal is to try to be as complementary to the existing architecture as possible, so if they are, if the adjacent windows are painted red, we're happy to make sure that the new ones are going to have that red finish. Great questions.
I wish you had built this when I was still there. I would not have to walk downstairs and go back upstairs.
What we all hope is that when this is done, everybody's going to say, why didn't we do this 10 years ago? We really feel that this is, again, for the size and the dollars, this is a really, really well-thought-out project. You know, with the study, this is going to make a major significant positive impact on your school, between reducing the need for the modulars and connecting these two to have better flow. It's really, really a well, this is going to be an exciting project to do.
And it's a safety issue, because at least one blind area is going to be taken care of with this, at least one.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I love under-budget. That makes my heart happy and everyone's pockets happy, especially given our current budget struggle. So that's exciting. A few questions, the, is the, it's over the auxiliary gym, is that correct?
It's actually adjacent to it.
Okay.
So the auxiliary.
So what is it going over, just so, what is it being built on top of?
There's a handful of small classrooms that are on the, I don't, I'm sorry.
Like underneath?
Yes, ma'am. So there's a couple of classrooms below that exist, and the, your cafeteria and your auxiliary gym are spaces on the first floor that are adjacent to it.
Okay, so those classrooms are all still going to be functional during construction, right?
So we.
Are we moving people around during construction?
During the summer, we're going to be asking that we not have folks down below, because I really don't want to swing steel when people are below the building. Once we get the floor poured and the concrete's there, then yes. So the goal is, is that when everybody comes back in the fall, all of the spaces below are fully functional.
So is there a backup plan? Because we all know that construction doesn't always go as planned, that if, for whatever reason, things get behind when school starts in the fall, if that's not all done, is there a backup plan for those classrooms? So.
Yes, we're working on backup plans, not only for the classrooms, but then also, keep in mind that that is your main corridor connect between the two. So we're also working on contingency plans if we had to go and use the courtyard for a couple of days or, so yes, we are working with the building principal to work, to, for contingency plans in the event that, oh my goodness, it rains every single day and we weren't able to do that. So.
Okay, I mean, yeah, I think we would all like to see that too, just as far as for academic planning. And then my other question was the classroom that has the partition, which I think is awesome, but I'm a little concerned about noise between the classrooms. Could you just give me a little more information on that?
Yes, so when I was a student, which was like 70 years ago, so we, those of us, you know, when you saw, used to see the floating partitions are more of like a panel thing, and all they do is basically keep your vision out. They were super thin. The good news on the new panels is they have a high STC rating. So they are thicker, and they run off of the, the structure is above. So they're really easy to open and close, and they have a high STC rating. So if you can imagine a gypsum wallboard wall that has gypsum and then sound, I'm sorry, am I, is that better? Okay. So the answer is the STC rating on those are as good as an insulated wall that you would have in between classrooms.
Okay.
Yeah, they've really made significant improvements in the, in the sound quality of those panels.
Okay, that's wonderful. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, I have questions about, I think you mentioned that there would be like daylight in parts of the new corridor. Is that going to be true on this? Does it chew up? Are there windows right near where that word addition would be?
Right here, that we're looking at putting windows in this corridor wall here to allow daylight to come in. Yes, sir.
Okay. And then what about in the existing gym? Because there are windows there too, so are those windows going to be lost?
Yes, sir. So the windows that are on this side are going to be sacrificed to the addition, but we still have the windows on this elevation, the glass block windows, so there will still be natural daylight coming in the space, not, just not quite as much as there is right now.
Okay. Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
I actually think March '25 is going to be here in a second also.
A little scary.
Yeah, so I was wondering, maybe Rosalyn, you might be able to answer this. Do we have any examples of recent projects built in close proximity of classes while classes were going on?
I should think, I would say, any major construction project, all of our additions have been immediately adjacent to classroom spaces. I have to admit, this is probably the first one in a long time where it's been over occupied spaces, but as he mentioned, we pre-qualify our contractors, and they have experience often in schools, and our project manager is on-site in school safety and fire and everything, so there's a lot of protocols in place for that to occur.
Okay, great. And also, since Dr. Akov is not here with us tonight, I would be remiss in not being really excited about getting rid of one of the learning cottages. Well, one, right? Is it one?
Just one.
This'll, so Albemarle currently uses two modular. This would, we are eliminating one in conjunction with this project, and then the center two. So one would still remain, but this removes one. And on behalf of Dr. Akov too, this was funded through the high school renovations work, so I think it's an example of, when we think of renovations, it's improvements to existing buildings, it's not updated finishes and other things. So that's the other thing I want to echo Dr. Akov and Mr. Alcaraz's advocacy for that, those work, and this is the outcome of it.
Yeah, this is great. I mean, for all the reasons that we've mentioned, I think this is going to be a great addition. Thank you. And this is just for information, we'll vote on this next time. Is that correct?
Just for information tonight, and it will be on the consent agenda at the next meeting for approval.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Next, we have the high school center two schematic design. Mr. Warburg?
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Matt Warburg, Deputy Director of Building Services. I'm here this evening to give you a brief budget update on the high school center two project and to request action to approve the schematic design and to advance to the design development phase. Our agenda will include a brief update on the budget, followed by the subsequent request for action. Our conversation this evening is focused on the third goal of providing equitable and transformative resources as outlined in the board's strategic plan. So first, our budget update. As a quick reminder of where we were when we last presented this project to you on January 11th, we were at that time projecting an initial funding shortfall of approximately $10 million. We had identified some potential value engineering options that would reduce the shortfall to 4.7 to 6.3 million dollars. The first proposed value engineering solution is actually several miscellaneous value engineering options that total over $3.6 million. The largest of these is an overall building square foot reduction by approximately 5,000 square feet. I will go into more detail on this in the subsequent slides. Other value engineering options include bidding the second elevator cab as a bid additive, however still building the elevator shaft itself, changes to the type of window systems utilized, as well as some minor site modifications across the campus to reduce project costs. The design committee discussed each of these measures individually and collectively agreed that they did not present a major impact to the student learning experience and helped alleviate budget concerns without impacting future needs. To further break down the proposed square footage reduction, this slide shows a visual of the new overall building footprint in gray with a dark outline of the previous building footprint. A majority of these reductions were centered in two major areas, the corridors and the commons area. It is important to note that this reduced building footprint did not significantly reduce classroom sizes, and it is also more aligned with the original CIP scope, which was for a 61,500-square-foot facility. This slide is to show that even with the reduced common square footage, we are still able to accommodate the same amount of students during a lunch period, and the reduced footprint still accommodates the entire 400-student body in a lecture-seated configuration. The second value engineering option represents some changes to the Albemarle High School campus with respect to the location of the practice fields, tennis courts, and proposed parking. The original option on the left proposed moving the tennis courts and practice fields towards northeast of the site to accommodate parking on the site of the existing tennis courts. However, we are continuing to study the possibility of retaining the existing tennis courts and instead only moving the practice fields to accommodate a new parking lot on the location of the existing fields. Hope that makes sense, that's a little wording. There are several pros and cons for each option, but this value engineering solution has an estimated savings of approximately $1.7 million. The design committee is still considering several key factors related to these two options, and we will provide an update on this when we return to you with our design development presentation in April. So I'll quickly take you through the revised floor plans. There were no substantive changes to Level Zero, which serves as the proposed data center and main mechanical room. We are continuing conversations with the technology department about the pros and cons of a new data center integrated into this building versus a separate standalone building. Those conversations are ongoing, and we will provide an update in April. On the first floor, as I mentioned, there was a reduction in the size of the commons area, as well as slight reductions to the admin suite and corridors throughout the building. There were no changes to learning spaces on this floor. On the second floor, the only major changes were a slight reduction to circulation spaces, and again, there were no changes to the learning spaces on this floor. So this brings us to our current budget status. In our fiscal year '25 CIP maintenance budget, we had already accounted for a $1.1 million programming for tennis court resurfacing and repairs to Albemarle High School's tennis courts. We are proposing to utilize those future CIP maintenance funds to assist with the modifications to the AHS athletics portion of the project, which brings the revised construction budget to $33.75 million. However, our estimate has actually slightly increased since we last presented this project. This is largely due to some decisions that have been made around the HVAC system, that is a preferred system to ensure we are striving for the ambitious sustainability goals that we have for this project, so that we are aligned with the county's climate action plan. And as I previously mentioned, the design committee is still considering the pros and cons for value engineering solution number two. Thus, we are unfortunately still forecasting a 4.5 to 6.2 million-dollar funding gap for this project. As far as next steps, per-year action at the January 11th meeting, Chair Lee will be sending a letter to the Board of Supervisors formally requesting additional capital funds for both this project and the Southern Feeder Pattern Elementary School to cover these gaps. As I mentioned, we are here tonight to formally request your authorization to proceed to the design development phase of this project. In doing so, the design committee will continue to seek ways to reduce project costs where possible without sacrificing ACPS standards and quality. At the conclusion of the design phase, we will complete two additional cost estimates, including an independent estimate, and then we will return to you in April with an update of the project status. I also have one other update on this project since the school board's last meeting. Kagan Squire, who's the project manager leading this project, and our team were able to successfully complete the rezoning process that was necessary to provide additional flexibility on setback and height restrictions for this new building. I'm happy to report that the Board of Supervisors unanimously agreed to that, and approved that rezoning application at its January 17th meeting, which now paves the way for us to proceed to the site plan application process as soon as we're able. Of course, major risks moving forward could include continued inflation to construction costs, delays in obtaining site plan approval, and any major changes to the site plan or overall building layout could result in scheduled delays and/or cost impacts. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. We do have a proposed motion, should the board wish to take action this evening.
Questions or comments?
So on the practice fields, did we lose one?
No.
Because we, didn't we have three back there?
There's only two existing ones, and these don't show it, but so basically, there's a, where the proposed parking is here, I think you can see my mouse. There's a, there's a field here, existing field here, and then there's an existing field directly beside it. There is kind of an extra grassy area here, but it's not truly a practice field that is utilized by the Albemarle Athletics Program.
Yeah, I remember a time earlier that when we had three back there, but we did some modifications in '91.
There's a, there's a field across from, across Lams Lane.
I understand what you're talking about, that's different. Yeah, I've got it, thanks, I appreciate it.
Yep.
In the value engineering, where was the pedestrian bridge?
That was actually on the site. We, we were able to mitigate by removing that by changing some of the grading, but we were basically kind of trying to create a landscaping type feature through here. So we were able to mitigate that by just grading it out, which is saving us money.
Okay, but it's not gonna be a safety concern?
No, no ma'am. It was really just a landscape architecture feature.
Those are nice. If we can afford them, okay. All right, does anyone have a motion?
I move to approve the schematic design of the new high school center two, which will have a name, I presume, and direct staff to proceed to the design development phase.
A second.
Moved by Ms. Osborne, seconded by Mr. Page. Any discussion, are we ready for a vote?
So we will give that a name, correct?
Well, I mean, you put it into the motion, so it is. Good job. I think we can, can we get a roll call for this, Christine, please?
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Pace?
Yes. Oh, Pace, sorry about that.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Filmon?
Yes.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
So moved.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have our budget educational information session, part one, with Ms. Kumazawa and Mr. Regenbaum.
Good evening, I'm Maya Kumazawa, Director of Budget and Planning, and this evening I hope to facilitate an educational budget 101 session as we prepare for the presentation of the draft funding request. Our agenda is twofold, there will be a break in between, but we'll first hear a little bit more about state revenues, since we're anticipating a pretty significant change from previous years. And then the second part will be a working session on digging into all the parts of the budget and understanding what makes up our budget each year. This aligns with Goal Three, equitable transformative resources of our adopted strategic plan. Before I hand it over to our guest speaker, I just wanted to go over an overview of our revenues. The pie chart on the left shows our recurring FY '24 adopted revenues. This is showing that 72.4% of those revenues come from local sources, including the local transfer from Albemarle County, 27.4% comes from the state, and then 618,000 comes from the federal government. Our total recurring budget this year is 257.7 million. As I mentioned, we're anticipating pretty significant changes in the state budget going into the next fiscal year, so that's represented on the right. You can see our local source of funding is going up to about 75% to make up for a decrease in state funding, that's going down to 24.8%. In dollar terms, we're projecting a $6.6 million increase in local revenues, or a 3.6%. In state revenues, we're projecting an $8 million decrease, or a decline of 11.2%. And overall, that is a negative $1.4 million impact in terms of our projected revenues as of this point. Again, we do anticipate things to change as we progress throughout the budget process, but this is the starting point from which we're working. A bit about our local transfer overview, since that makes up really the bulk of our funding. Within the local transfer, it is calculated by formula, and so there's, we have general property taxes, other local taxes, and non-categorical state aid that the county considers as shared revenues between ACPS, local government, and the CIP. And so they take the projected shared revenues for the following fiscal year, and they take off some committed expenditures from the top. That includes revenue sharing, tax relief programs, Economic Development Authority performance agreements, and a transfer to the Water Resources Fund. So what's remaining after these expenditures are taken out of our projected shared revenues, 10% of what's remaining goes towards the CIP, that's a shared program between local government, partner agencies, and ACPS. 54% comes to our operating budget in the form of that transfer, and 36% goes, stays with the county. So, since we've talked a lot about state revenues, Jackson Zimmerman's gonna introduce our guest speaker for us this evening.
Good evening, I'm Jackson Zimmerman, the School Finance Officer. I just wanted to introduce Jim Regenbaum. He's, did a wonderful presentation at VAS and VASBO earlier this month, and following that presentation, I invited him to come and speak to the school board regarding potential state revenues associated with it. Mr. Resim, Regenbaum has 40 years of experience in state and local government and tax policy analysis. He's served as 12 years on the staff of the Virginia Senate Finance Committee from 1987 to 1999. And since then, he's founded Fiscal Analytics, which provides expertise in tax policy issues to local governments and trade groups. His government clients include Virginia Association of Counties, Virginia First Cities Coalition. In the past, he's done also Virginia Municipal League, the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, and the Virginia Healthcare Associations. So I'll present Mr. Regenbaum.
Thank you, thank you, Jackson. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, how are you? I've, I've been doing a version of this presentation for years now, and obviously, obviously the story changes a lot, but I keep getting asked to do this by various groups, so I hope I'm getting better at it. I know you guys are wondering why you're, maybe you've heard some, why the amount of money you're expecting to get in fiscal '25 and '26 is quite a bit lower than '24. And I, so I want to kind of start with that. So there's, there's a couple main reasons. First of all, fiscal '24, there was some one-time pots of money that was put in because of the huge growth in state general fund revenues. They decided that this wasn't going to be an ongoing situation with this, with the growing revenues, and so they put one-time monies in. And they were, they, they have proposed, the governor in his introduced bills proposed to take those out. So that was 2.4 million, added the 418 all-in money, as the governor calls it, that was one time, and then 1.7 million, this was out of your pot, from the re-benchmarking hold harmless during COVID, because they didn't trust the data during COVID and the re-benchmarking process, so they gave everyone extra money in both years, so that's, you know, $4 million right there. And then the governor's proposed to remove what was supposed to be an ongoing revenue source, that was replacing the cut in, in, in the food tax that was, that reduced the sales tax distribution based on school age population by 18%. You, you were getting this year, this year, $3.2 million. So that is not in the proposed budget by the governor. My expectation is the General Assembly's gonna put that back in. So there's a source of money for you, right there potentially, all right? So the issue, of course, is how much money is available to put more money into K-12. And the governor, he pretty much flatlined it. Also, every two years, you've probably heard that the, the SOQ, the Standards of Quality, which is the pot of money that is distributed to the school divisions, then each division gets a share based on your local composite index, which yours is pretty high, that's the other huge reason that you've lost money. That's about $6 million worth that you lost in this budget, because you went, you, you gained five points in your LTI, 5%, in other words, you went up to, from .64 to like .69. And that's my calculation, you know, roughly 1.2, 1.3 million dollars a point for Albemarle County. So when it goes up, that's how much you lose. So the re-benchmarking, yes, it added money, a significant amount statewide, you know, about half, about half a billion a year, by the re-benchmark of costs, that's what, that's what it is, it's inflation and prevailing salaries going up, and they're, they, they decide how much they're going to increase the state share through re-benchmarking. So you got more money through that, but it got taken away from the one-time being taken out that we discussed, and your local composite going up. And so that's why you're actually losing even more money than, more money than you're getting. So what I want to tell you is, I want to go back now, see if I use this correctly, I'm not gonna, this is a long presentation, you don't have time for all this, okay? So I'm, I'm gonna summarize greatly. The economics that the governor uses to forecast revenues is very conservative, and they've been expecting a recession, the, the state, for over a year now, that hasn't happened. They're still expecting a recession at the end of this fiscal year and the start of '25. Doesn't look like that's gonna happen either. So they want to be, they always like to be conservative, they don't, they don't want to overspend, they like to either underspend and have money at the end of the year. And so that's probably gonna happen again. In fact, it might happen so quickly that the General Assembly's gonna decide to re-forecast revenues themselves, or maybe the governor will come over in February and provide more money. So there's another potential source of money, okay? Is that revenues, without in doing anything, the growth in your economy is gonna be better than expected. So that's a possibility, that they could put more money in. This is the economic forecast, you can see it, '24 and '25 drops significantly, the US GDP, today's GDP report was 3% for the quarter, you know, so it's, that's pretty, I'm not gonna do all this CPI data, that's the, that's the growth, and this presentation you'll have, you can look at at your leisure. So what else impacted revenues? Well, year, two years ago and last year, we had big tax cuts. So much money was rolling in, General Assembly agreed with the governor to mainly, the biggest one was a standard deduction increase, and that you can see is 800-plus million a year in '25 to the cost of that. That's already been done. This is the new proposed, that the governor, in his introduced bill, he's proposed to cut income taxes, but then to raise the sales tax rate nine tenths of a cent, to partly make up for, and expand the sales tax base to include things like streaming services, pay tax on your Netflix bill, okay, other things like that. That would, that would still leave, though, a billion dollars over the biennium short. So his budget proposal has tax cuts in it again, and the General Assembly, I don't believe, is gonna pass this. So there's a billion dollars right there, that they're probably going to put a lot into K-12, although there's other needs. State employee salaries basically didn't get anything either. Teacher salaries didn't get anything, but that would help you, but there are other potential needs that the General Assembly's gonna have to address. So this is one avenue. This is the, I'm not gonna go through the forecast, this is the huge growth in general fund revenues over the last couple years, 33%. I've been doing this since 1982, I've never seen growth in general fund revenues like this, over a couple years, from 2020 through 2022. And as you see the green, that, without the tax cuts, it would have been there, that's the tax cuts. Remember, there was a huge rebate that was given, a billion dollars, then the standard deductions, another rebate was given this year in '24, remember in the fall, you got a check from the state. So that's the green bar. And you, the proposal is the red, you see, and when you go to '25 and '26. So revenues are, are, are flat because of, growth has slowed down the economy, but also because of tax reductions, okay? So that's the point there. So you can see, they have money to carry forward, you can see the available balance, they didn't spend that, they couldn't spend money fast enough, it was coming in so fast. They had 2.3 billion, 2.4 billion carried over from '24 into '25 in this, in this introduced budget. That's one time, remember that. That's why you can see, go down to the pros, the general fund appropriations, 32.2, that goes down the next year, because all that one-time revenue is used up. Okay, so that's part of the problem. You know, the state has to balance its budget, so some one-time revenues, they're not gonna build too much into their operating budget, they have to be cognizant of structural balance as well. Okay? So, bottom line is, that, I don't think that tax policy proposal's gonna fly, there's gonna be money there, and I think there's a better economy than they expect, there's probably money there. And I can tell you this, there's money the governor proposes to spend, they're probably not gonna do. I mean, I worked at Senate Finance, part of my job was to find money for them to spend, and we always did. Okay? So they'll, they'll be finding some other money. Can't tell you what, but they will, what's there. So this, at your leisure, this is the state general fund budget, and those numbers balance, okay? So you, at your leisure, you, you want to look at what we, the state spends its money on, appropriates money to, and you can see the last couple columns are the proposal by the governor. That's three, actually, because there's a caboose bill for this current year to actually, that actually cuts relatively significant dollars out of K-12 this year, because there's reduced enrollment than they expected, reduced sales taxes, some other things, and technical changes that actually cut. You can see the 929, you know, they cut, they cut a couple hundred million this year we're in, as well. Now, the 500 million that you see for the biennium, that's more at the very right, the majority of that is actually the money going to DOE for the childcare program, the subsidy program that the federal government was funding, that's ending at the end of this year, and the governor has put in his budget over $400 million to, to continue that subsidy program for childcare. That's not going to school divisions, that's going to DOE for, for basically young children's childcare subsidy for their parents, okay? So don't get fooled by that 500 million right there, is what I'm saying. So this, of VAS people, the school superintendents always like me to do this, this is the per-pupil state funding statewide, on, on average. And so you can see, it was very flat, and finally, with that, that huge growth in revenue in, in '23 and '24, it went up a lot on a per-pupil basis. And that reflected 5% per year, 7% one-year salary increases that they, they funded, the one-time funding, the 800 million plus for school construction, they, they did something there, the one-time money, as we discussed, all that's kind of been poured into, was poured into '23 and '24, and so the per-pupil amount went up quite a bit. But then look at what happens after that, it goes flat again in, in '25 and '26, basically. And then when you adjust for inflation, the red bar, it really doesn't grow as much as you think. Okay, when you take the C, when you adjust it for the CPI, it really doesn't grow all that much. And you can see, 2009 is kind of a high watermark, and we haven't, and inflation, we haven't done much better since, than since then, on a, on an inflation-adjusted basis in terms of state funding for K-12. Our school system is slowly declining throughout the state, in fact, and I noticed Albemarle has a slight reduction in its ADM as well. And so that, that's another reason. Remember, the SOQ and a lot of the, even the incentive programs and other programs are funded on a per-pupil basis. So if you lose students, doesn't mean your costs go down, because the economies of scale are kind of the same, still have to have the same, but you lose funding from the state, because it's paid to you on a per-pupil basis, okay? These, just showing you some of the reductions and increases I've highlighted, the technical reduction, this is the caboose bill this current year, these are what I talked about, why it's gone down from what was in the adopted budget in September to now, the proposal is to actually reduce, because these, these general fund spending across categories, most of them are for K-12, fairly sizable amounts, sales tax, lower enrollment, incentive programs going down, ESL and remedial summer school enrollment going down, so they, they were able to use lottery monies as well, because guess what? Lottery monies go to K-12, and they're, they're like general funds in reality, but they do substitute for general funds. When I talk about general funds, and the lottery accounts jumped up, there's a lot of gambling going on, or something, because it went way up. And they then took general funds out and replaced it with lottery. So if you're only talking general funds, then it, it goes down, but it really is, some of it's replaced with lottery monies. All right, now you know about, I, I, how familiar are you guys with re-benchmarking? This, this slide just shows you sort of the, what is going on with re-benchmarking, they're basically increasing both personnel and non-personnel costs for inflation and other reasons, and re-benchmark for numbers of kids, et cetera. And so that, this chart kind of gives you a flavor for that, okay? And so that, this chart kind of gives you a flavor for that, okay? Now, what also happens every two years? And Jackson said, you aren't that familiar with how the local composite index is constructed. And what I try to do with a chart like this is, this shows you the math of it, okay? And those numbers represent your percent of the state, okay? So, and they use, the data that's used, which is 2021 for this next biennium, except for ADM, which is March of '22, but all the other four are March, are '21, they're very lagged data. And so look at real estate, true value real estate. Albemarle County has 1.58% of the state's true value real estate. That's, that's what you have. Whereas I believe Fairfax would be something on the order of 20%, something like that. So you're 1.58%. But it doesn't matter, because really what matters is, well, what matters is the numerator or the denominator. So the three factors in the numerator are supposed to, they're a crude measure of your ability to raise, what your, what your taxing ability is. So 50% across is viewed to be real estate, your real estate taxes. That's why it's weighted at 50% in the numerator. 10% is the local option, sales tax. You see that? And then the 40% adjusted gross income, which your residents put on their tax returns, the total, the gross amount, that's supposed to represent all the other tax sources that you can get money from, okay? Everything else. And so then, so that's this crude measure of your ability to raise revenue. And then the denominator is what you're spending it on. And so that's your ADM, and then the rest of your population. This, this used to be all ADM, but it got changed to one-third population. And the reality is, locality is on average spent half of their money on something besides education. I think it should be 50/50, the number, but it's not. It's two-thirds, one-third, okay? And so if your numerator goes up, that ratio, look at the, look at the current one, 1.79, look how it's gone up from 165 to 179. That's, almost all is the reason is because your adjusted gross income line. Maybe you had Warren Buffett move into Albemarle County, I don't know. But somehow you had a big jump in that two-year period from the 2019 tax returns to the '21 tax returns. You jumped up from 1.7 to 2.14% of the state's AGI, and that's a huge jump, okay? Your denominator didn't change hardly at all. You see the denominator, didn't change at all. Your population, ADM, that stayed the same. So that's not the factor. Your real estate actually went down. That helped you a little bit in terms of your comp, but it was overwhelmed by that 40% AGI number, okay? So that's why you went up. And you can kind of track that over time. Yes, sir?
So Jim, the one question I have is like, I can see how the, the true value of real estate, that comes back through the local, right? And then taxable sales, does, does the income tax that people are supposed to pay based on their gross income, does that in any way find its way back to us?
No, you're, you're misunderstanding what I'm saying.
Okay.
That 40% AGI represents all your other taxes, like your tangible personal property, your car tax, your meals tax, if you have one. It's a proxy, that's all it is. Okay? You're absolutely right, though.
So it has no, like, nothing rooted in reality of local funding that would come to us?
No. And in fact, J-Lark recommended in its summer report to not use this anymore, to use a much more disaggregated model that actually uses your, your various tax sources and then compares them differently, okay? So that was one, and then use the three-year average of it, so if there's a jump in one year, it doesn't affect you. So J-Lark is recommending something on the order of what you're saying, okay? We'll see if the General Assembly adopts it. It's, it's a tough deal. I've watched this a long time. The reason it's a tough deal is because without putting more money into the pot, there's winners and losers every time this changes, because it's a zero-sum game. Remember, percent of state? So if you go up or you go down, someone else has to go up or down opposite of you, okay? So it's all geared around, the average LCI always is .55 for the state and .45 for the locality. So see that number at the bottom, the ratio of numerator, denominator? If that's 1.0, if your numerator is exactly the same as denominator, you have a .45 composite index, okay? So that's the math of it, all right? And across the state, that will happen. That's what the state will pay. They pay 55% of the standards of quality, localities on average pay 45, but it varies by every locality because of this, okay? Now, the reason why you spend so much more just for your edification, every locality does, is because, sort of the next slide, these are the big ones. You see Charlottesville also had even a bigger jump than you. They went up seven and a half points. Same reason, AGI. Something happened in Charlottesville, too. So they're moving there. This whole region had an AGI jump from 19 to 21, okay? Same reason. All right, so here, I'm just telling you about, I had a thought and I lost it, but yeah, I lost the thought, I was going to tell you something else, but. So these are the other changes to the current, the introduced budget. And this is just the K-12 changes. But I'm, I'm not going to go through them all. We don't have time, really. There's technical, there's policy, but I'm going to take you to this chart, okay? So this sort of gets to the bottom line and it shows you why it's very flat. You can see the base for '24 was 92.15 billion dollars in general funds, 9.2 billion. Well, the technical adjustments in the caboose bill are going to bring it down to 8.9. Remember, I showed you earlier that reduced, you know, number of students, reduced sales, you know, that's the caboose bill. That's, that's before the General Assembly, too. And then that base, same base you use, well, you remove those one times, and I show you the big ones, I show you the ones, and they're all, there are four of them, the flexible funding and the COVID hold harmless, that's the major ones, and that's that 586. That's being removed out of that base, okay? So that gets you the new base, 8628. Well, then the re-benchmarking you can see was 471 and technical changes, re-benchmarking. Then you did some other minuses in there, lower enrollments, et cetera. That's a plus of 471 and 497 for the two years, the re-benchmarking and technical change. Then you can see the policy changes, okay? The increase is 303 for '25, but there was more decreases. So the actually policy proposals, it was, it was basically nothing, okay? A little bit of bonus, a little bit of salary increase, but really nothing, more, more negative than positive. And so, so you get re-benchmarking minus the policy changes, gets you the new amount spending. And so it's, it's not more money. That's one of the reasons you're not seeing more to Albemarle, because he's not proposing more money in this introduced bill. And as I mentioned, I think that will go up, though, for the reasons I'm, taxes won't be in. The General Assembly, I will say this, the General Assembly, what I've seen is they look like the members are, the senior members are coordinating on both the House and Senate proposals to increase funding, but their, their major proposals look to be around special ed, and that's very expensive, and then the at-risk students, okay? And some of those are a billion dollars a year, okay? Some technical changes, too, but the big ones are special ed and at-risk. And I don't know if that's what they're ultimately going to do, because I haven't seen much in salary increase. I expect they would want to do that. And I would also expect they'd want to get that, rid of that, fully get rid of that support cap that has been in place since 2009, and they've been getting rid of that the last couple of years, but they still have 116 million left to do. So, you know, I don't know how much they're going to raise, and there's a whole bunch of ideas on how to, you know, what they can put it in. It matters to you, because I don't suspect you have as many as others, the at-risk student population, and maybe not even the special ed population. So if they put, and I don't know, I just don't know. Maybe, and if you don't, if you, if let's say Charlottesville has more, Richmond has more, that's going to be directed more to them, this, this new, you know, if they decide to spend money there of that extra money they're going to find, then it's not going to come to Albemarle as much. I know you have some, but not as much as them, because that's more directed spending, Now, these are just, I'm showing this to other people, all these major spend, because this is showing people, if I had time, where they might not, what they might not do, what they might, you know, economic development ideas, you know, 100 million here, 50 million there, they, the General Assembly might not do that, put it in the pot to spend for K-12. So here's the J-Lark recommend, from the summer, right here. Have you seen these before? Have you seen summaries of this? Yeah. And so you, you know that there's sort of longer term, and the longer term revolves around the fact, and this is the, this is the thought I had, revolves around the fact why almost every locality spends way more than what the state provides them. It's because they own this, the standards of quality only cover two-thirds of positions on average throughout the state that are employed. And that means that one-third that's not covered, you, every school has to spend, has to pay for 100% of those positions. You get no help from the state. And so it, you know, every locality spends a lot more. You're not alone. You are on the higher side of the percentage, but you're not alone. Everyone does that, because I'll give you, I'll give you two examples on the positions. So teacher aides, there's 21,000 in Virginia, employed by school divisions. That was a year or two ago. There's less than 3,000 covered by the standards of quality out of 21,000, okay? They'll basically only cover kindergarten, a very, a few kindergarten and special ed teacher aides, that's it. But teacher aides are employed all the way through high school. And the other big one, another big one, is assistant principals. They cover about 2,000 out of the 8,000 assistant principals that are employed in the SOQ. So that's two big examples. The other one here is, and you probably are affected by this, I don't know your salary scales are here, but are you familiar with how the prevailing salaries work? It's in the budget, prevailing salary, what they'll pay for an elementary school teacher, what the SOQ recognizes and pays for a high school teacher, for a principal, for an assistant principal. They're in there, and it's a dollar amount. It's calculated based on all 134 school divisions are, each one is equal, no matter the size, okay? But the ones that are stu, two standard deviations basically outside the average are lopped off on the, on the back and the other side. And then whatever's in the middle of that is the prevailing salary. Well, guess what? If you take the middle and you go up to that side, and maybe not two standard, or all the big counties, they pay a lot more than the rurals. And the rurals are, there's, there's way more rural counties, and they don't pay nearly as much. So that prevailing salary is always 10,000 less than the weighted average salary. And so J-Lark said, wait a minute. The funny thing is, they're the ones that came up with it. And I've been telling them ever since they did it that I didn't like it. It doesn't work. So they're finally, they're finally now saying, no, it doesn't work. It's not real, it's not right. Because three-quarters of the teachers are underpaid, you know, by the state. You have to supplement and pay the rest. So that's a huge part of the J-Lark one, too. And that was actually one of their near-term recommendations. But I didn't see that in a budget amendment by a member. Maybe I missed it. I hadn't seen that one. Maybe they don't want to bite that off yet. So, so these are the near-term ones that J-Lark talked, remember? See the middle, prevailing salaries using the division weighted average? It's coming right out of J-Lark, right in the middle of this, this thing. I haven't seen that proposed by, yet. Some of these other ones, this, that's that at-risk one at the very top, and I've seen budget amendments saying, J-Lark estimated that to be 250 million a year, the cost to actually combine the SOQ at-risk, what's the incentive at-risk, and then use the proper data. We're not using proper data to decide who gets it. That would be 250 million. I saw a proposal by Senator Hashman, that's 500 million to fix that. So I don't know where they're going to go on this, okay? On, on this one, or how they're going to spend their money. But that gives you an idea of what, discontinued Great Recession era cost reduction measures, that's the support cap plus transportation costs, things like that, that they took out on you, okay? That one. All right, and I put that bill, see, you can look at HB 624, Zul, go to him, he's, he's kind of leading the pack. He's one of the leaders in the House on this issue. And he's got a bill in, 924 million a year, and he's got a budget amendment in, too, to do the same thing. And you can see 600 million of that, of that 900 for special ed. So they may go that way. All right, so don't need to go over that, you probably know. This just reiterates the composite index, the, of the five factors, the most important. The most important is ADM, actually, not real estate. So when you lose students, you get hit twice, because it's paid on a per pupil basis, but if you lose students, it also raises your LCI. Does both. So you don't want to be a school division looting students, under the current formula. It hurts you. This is just, you want to look at it, I, I put some information on how the state comes up with its funding, you know, this, the model they use. And I am going to be doing a seminar through VAS on Monday at 10 o'clock, and I, I sent Jackson the link, if anyone's interested, Monday morning at 10. And it's going to be a much further discussion of this chart right here, there's more in here for you to look. You can see the staffing standards right here that go into there. And you can see the prevailing salaries that are in the current biennium right here. They've gone, they went up a lot. That's part of the re-benchmarking. But they're still not paying as much as you are, are they? Do you pay your alumni teachers on average 61,000? I don't know. I, I don't know, but you can.
We're, yeah, we're above that.
You're below that?
For sure. We're above it.
Yeah, you're above it. So, right, so that's, but that's the proposal, the 24th to the new biennium, and you can see the current one is 53. That's the FY '24 amount that this SOQ recognizes. But, so re-benchmarking always lags, it uses, it uses data now to give you money in the future. And I've always had a problem with that, too, because it doesn't really give you the real cost at the time you're having to pay it, okay? So anyhow, Monday at, I'm probably taking more of your time, but Monday at 10, you can register, I sent the link to Jackson, if anyone's.
Jackson, could you send that link to all of us? Great, perfect.
Happy to answer any questions, but I blew through that, I know, but I know your time is valuable, so.
So when do we actually know? I mean, when can we get a better idea?
All right, that's a great question. So a better idea is definitely the right word to use, because the February, the Sunday, is it February 18th or 19, or 17th? What is that, February? I know, I'm going, Saturday, I'm going skiing, so it's the weekend before.
18, 19.
So, so the 18th is the money committees meet on Sunday afternoon, the General Assembly Building. They will present the committee budgets that alter the governor's introduced bill, and the committee budgets have never been not, have never been in the main voted down in the full Senator House. The committee is, is the leadership of those bodies. They've come together, that committee budget will be what goes to each house. Now, what does happen, of course, is then it goes to conference, because they're not going to be the same, and they are going to appoint a conference committee, and they're going to hash it out, and that can take weeks. And you remember what happened last year? They couldn't come to an agreement. It took till September, basically, for them to get a budget for this year. And that was the first time it took that long. But I can see, even though, I don't see a problem with the General Assembly agreeing on their budgets, I think they will probably be in sync, both Democrat, last year was Republican, Republican House, Democratic Senate, one of the reasons they couldn't agree. There was a lot of money, couldn't agree how to spend it. They wanted to spend on tax cuts. Well, the tax cut issue is still before them, this time with the governor. It was last time, too, but he had, had an ally in the House. He didn't have an ally in the House this time. Not going to happen in those budgets. But the governor may decide he wants something. So what is his leverage? So let's say that they get out on time, signee die, you know, late March or mid-March, they send the budget to the governor. What is his options? His options, he can amend, he can amend sentences lines in the budget. He can do that, but guess what? You can override those with a majority vote, easily overridden. So that doesn't do him any good, the governor. He can only veto an entire item. And so direct aid to K-12 is about a $9 billion item. If he does that, which I've never seen a governor ever do, that's a nuclear option. He might as well just veto the entire budget and say, I don't like this budget, go back to work, John, and send me something else. And then the fighting happens, okay? So who knows what's going to happen? I'm just saying. I can't answer your question, other than explain what the process is, okay?
Thank you.
So, just really quickly, I'm sorry. So, I, I'll just really quickly, I'm sorry. So on one of your slides, I found it on, what I've got here, reduced individual income tax rates by 12%.
Mm-hmm.
So what, what is that percentage now? Is it?
No, no, the governor's proposing to, for example, reduce the 5.75% rate to 5.1%.
Oh, okay.
Okay? That's his tax proposal. He wants to reduce every single bracket of the individual income by 12%. And that's, that's what, why it cost, where, where is that? I forget, what slide number is that? Do you know?
It's proposed tax policy. I don't know.
You know, slide number at the bottom, yeah? Where I put it here? Anyhow, that, that, it's expensive, a couple billion dollars to do that. That's why he has to offset it with an increase in the sales tax and a broadening of the sales tax base in his proposal.
To digital services?
Yes.
Okay.
But he's also raising, he's also proposing to raise the rate by point, by almost a percent. But the income tax is the primary driver of the general fund. You realize that, right? It's two thirds, it's two thirds of the general fund.
So trading a cut in the progressive tax for a cut in a more, a more regressive tax?
For an increase in regressive tax. Yeah.
Yeah. Increase in progressive.
And the governors, the governor, to be fair, his rationale is many states are reducing their income tax rates. And he, he's stating that we're losing business, people aren't, aren't coming here because of that. That's, that's why. He's not just doing it for, you know, that's his reasoning.
That's great. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Are you familiar with any new methods that the State Department of Education is coming up with or trying to come up with to devise a education budget? That might alleviate some of the problems that you mentioned?
In what sense, sir? What, what problems?
Uh, like a new way of sort of calculating certain things, looking at, um, different aspects instead of just what's being looked at now to devise the budget.
Well, the State Department of Education is not doing it. That's not really their role. They're not a policymaking body. Uh, the Board of Education is. The Board has proposed in the past, for example, enhancing the standards of quality like JLRK has done. They proposed that for years and, but the General Assembly is the one that is the final decider of what the standards of quality are going to be. The Board can propose, JLRK can recommend, it's, it's, JLRK is, is a study committee, commission of the General Assembly. They get asked to do studies by the General Assembly. And so they've recommended that, yes, it needs to be enhanced. The Board of Education, which is an executive branch agency, they've said, appointed by the governor, they've said, yes, for years, that the standards of quality are inadequate. In other words, that you're having to pay for too much at the local level and the state needs to pay for more because the reality is you have to hire all these people. And you need, the state needs to step up and cover more. So that has been proposed. It's, it's really a matter of money. It's a matter of, there's, there's two, the most important thing that legislators deal with is what? Taxes. Taxes. What's the, taxes? That's, that's the number one topic in my experience. The number two topic is education. So they do butt heads. Okay? They do butt heads, but you have to have the money. And so you'd rather get the money by good economic growth, you know, as opposed to raising taxes. But if you're not getting enough, then, I've been reading books on going all the way back to 1900 on Virginia, 1950s and the debates they had on educate, different kinds, but this is not new debate, pub, funding public ed, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeb.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, next we are going to take a 10-minute break, so we'll be back here at 8:15.
The second, the second tab includes what we're doing in this work session, which is the expenditure 101. So I will be moving the slides for the public on the screen, but you can just follow along in your binder. And then a lot of the slides do reference handouts. The first half of the handouts are in the third tab, and the latter half of the handouts are in the last pocket. So it's just slides, then first part of the handouts.
So these all handouts that are made available to the public as well?
Yes. There are extra copies here, and then I know there's a, on the table over there, there are copies available. So anyone-
If anyone in the audience wants copies, they're up here.
Thanks. So the basis of the information presented is the work that we have been doing to build the baseline budget for next year. So this is the baseline for budget development. It's really a step that we typically don't, haven't done in this timeframe. We'll usually do it after the draft funding request, but we thought, since it's going to be a little bit of a different budget process this year, it made sense if you all really understood how the budget was built before you heard the draft funding request. On slide eight, you will see the different pieces of how, what encompasses the baseline budget. So we're today only going to focus on the school fund. Oh, thanks. We're going to focus on the school fund expenditures. This is the day-to-day operating budget we talk about the most, but we do also have special revenue funds that include our self-sustaining funds and grant funds. Those we will not cover because those are budgeted totally separately. Within the school fund, if you go to level two, we have school-based budgets and department-based budgets. If you're familiar with the budget book, we always have sections on school-based and department-based. Within school-based, we have operating budgets, so non-people-related budgets, and then personnel budgets, so the budgets that are compensating people. And same with the department-based budgets, we have operating budgets that we separate from personnel budgets. And the reason why we do that is because personal budgets are managed centrally, so we don't ask department heads to budget how much their FTEs are going to cost. We do that centrally for them. But operating budgets are typically managed within a school or a department, and that's why we separate those out. This is really the internal view of why we do, why we have set it up this way. And then within the operating budgets for both school-based and department-based, we can further break it out. So on the next slide, this is the structure in which we're going to go through the materials. So we'll start with FTE budgets that are school-based first, then we'll go over FTE budgets that are department-based, and then we'll loop around in a circle, we'll go over lapse factor, non-departmental, department-managed operating budgets, centrally managed school budgets, and school-managed school budgets. So starting with school-based FTEs. School-based FTE budgets make up about 68% of this baseline FY25 budget that we're going to build up. And so this section will be the longest, since it's obviously the largest part of our budget and where we spend our money. Within school-based budgets, just to give you an idea of the pyramid on the right you all have seen before, that is the, if you took the total school-based budgets, then about 93% of that goes towards the FTE budget. So that's the piece we're talking about, which is the bulk of funding for school-based. We break down, because it's such a large amount, we break it down by every comprehensive elementary school, middle school, and high school. We have a budget for Center One, Community Lab. Next year, we will have one for Newcomer Learning Community, Post-Tie, Center for Learning Growth, and Multischool Services. Any questions so far?
What's an example of Multischool Services?
Great question. Multischool Services is where we would, if we have, because we're projecting, say, a special education population for next year, we don't know exactly where to staff all of our teachers, so we kind of hold back and wait to see, oh, well, where are the students showing up? And then we assign teachers. So it's almost, it's a holding area for, until we see where the kids are, then we allocate the resources. That's the primary purpose of Multischool. And we used, and we used to budget Post-Tie and Center for Learning Growth there, or other services, and we've started trying to break apart that piece so it's more clear. So the budget for that is going down over time.
Great. Thank you.
Where does intensive services in our fall?
That falls within the Special Education Department. So as of now, we consider department-based in terms of the FTEs who work there. But again, as we have new programs that are site-based and kid-focused, we try to adjust that each year, so that might be something to consider if we wanted to as a school. So it's, it's not, there aren't any set hard rules around which is which. This is just how we've defined it.
Maya, this, this might be a little bit off of the question, but is this the category that you would have, say, perhaps a special ed placement that left a division to go to another residential setting, perhaps? Or is that coming out of a different line?
I don't think I understand this.
Sometimes the division will be involved in the education of a special ed student.
Oh, the private placement?
Yeah.
Yep. The, for those, we, covered by the Children's Services Act, that is a transfer, we budget it as a transfer to that fund. And I'll go over the, I'll point that out when we get to that part of the budget.
Okay. Thanks.
So you will see that there are many school expenditures that we do budget in department-based, so I don't want to get too hung up on how we name those. You will see that a lot of what's in the departments goes directly to schools. Okay. So this is, we're going to just kind of do some work to build up a budget for a school, since we're talking about school-based FTEs. How do we come up with an FTE number? So the first thing we do is we have enrollment projections, which we usually present in the fall. For the purposes of the baseline budget, so as I'm talking in your third tab, you'll have enrollment projections. For the purposes of building a baseline budget, we use 23, 24 projected enrollments, so the current year. And the reason for that is we want to track the cost of growth, which you might remember in previous budget development cycles, that we first project out a new cost for the current year based on the current year's projection. That way, when we apply next year's projection, we can calculate to the dollar how much that's costing us. And so the baseline budget does not include anticipated growth or decreases, it just assumes this year. Yep. So the first page is the 23, 24 projection, and then the second page of Handout A is the 24, 25 projection, if you wanted to start, you know, building your own growth budget to determine, well, what's going to be the change by school. So take page one to determine baseline, and take, use page two if you want to project how the FTE would change by school. The next handout, Handout B, is the staffing standards. So this is the lengthiest handout because it goes through every single position almost in our school division, and how we staff it by formula. And so the purpose of this is to make sure that schools receive fair, a fair number of resources when compared to the number of students and the types of students that they're serving. These standards are reviewed typically during the budget process, so if there is a proposal to change a standard, that usually has a budget impact that would come through during the budget cycle. So if you turn to page two of the staffing standards, this is the page we'll work with. On the left, you'll, we'll start with regular education, elementary schools. On the left is the ACPS staffing standard. So what's the position, and what is the criteria that we use to staff that position? So classroom teacher, kindergarten through third grade, is allocated one teacher for every 19.55 projected students. And then on the right is the corresponding SOQ provided by the state, which says that we must staff, in order to receive that state funding we were talking about, we must staff one teacher per 24 students, generally. You can see there's some more details there. So wherever there is an SOQ, you'll find it on the right. Not all of our positions have SOQs. A lot of our positions are ACPS positions, but you can compare those side by side if you'd like. So before we get to Handout C, on the next slide, what I want to do is kind of walk through this Agner Hurt, because it comes first in the alphabet, and Classroom Teachers, because it comes first in our staffing standards. Easy for you guys to find. If you take the projected enrollment, so page one of Handout A for Agner Hurt, add up the number of students in kindergarten, first, second, and third grade. It's 255. And then you add up the fourth and fifth grade, which is 138. And you can see we have different ratios for K3 and 4.5, because there are different SOQs with those two groupings. The K3, for every 19.55 students, they're allocated by one, so you can divide the enrollment by the class size ratio. And then for 4.5, it goes up a little bit. You can take the enrollment for 4.5 and divide by 21.75. So if you do that, you get 13 teachers for K3 and six teachers for 4.5. Add those together, and you get 19 teachers for K5 at Agner Hurt. There are many, many positions here, and we're, that's the only example. If you want to go through anything else, I'll do that. But let's pull out Handout C, so you can see where that ends up. If you've done a budget work session with me in the past, I've always talked about how the supplemental section is really what the budget is about. That is what all these materials are pulled from, the supplemental section of the budget book. So they're always available, sort of all the inputs, what goes into the budget. And then the first half of the budget book is all about sort of the output, what happened? How did it result in financial numbers? So if you look at Handout C, and on page one, Agner Hurt's at the top, you can see their enrollment number, their differentiation factor, which is based on free and reduced lunch. And then if you multiply that against their adjusted enrollment, you get the number of projected economically disadvantaged students, which is 209. And just to the right of that, you'll see 19.39-based teachers. And now you know where that number came from. So you can see all the schools are listed, top to bottom, elementary, middle, high. There was a question about Multischool, so you can see what exactly is in Multischool. Right now, we have, for baseline, we have two, and holdback for Title One. If you keep going, we've got some other holdback numbers. Oh, we have student safety coaches, which was a school board proposal, an itinerant bookkeeper who serves multi schools. Same with the safety coaches, they serve all of our schools. AP interns, seed teachers, which is social, emotional, academic development teachers. So that, those are the FTEs budgeted in Multischool, to get back to that. If you go from left to right over three pages, you can see all of the positions that are part of the school-based FTE budgets. On page two, those are, some of those have asterisks next to them, those are our teaching assistants. For budget purposes, we count them as 50% of the cost of teachers. So if you see a .25 teaching in EDEPTA, that's actually a .5 funded by the school fund, because you double that. It's just discounted for budget purposes to, to make equivalent to a full-time teacher equivalent. And then the other .5 is budgeted in EDEP, which is self-sustaining fund. So this was a proposal, and I think an FY24 budget proposal, and that's where that shows up now, as a staffing standard and as a column. So wherever you see TAs, in your mind, you can double it, like a school-based sub, that's a TA. So you can double it in your head and say, okay, well, that's a real full-time person.
How do you staff sped teachers? What formula do you use?
That's on the, I think, next one or two slides. Yep, I'll go over that. Yep.
So am I right, am I right in, Agner Hurt gets an art and music and two PE teachers? Is that what that means? If you have four FTEs there?
Yep. So four FTEs combined for art, music, and PE. And so I don't know off the top of my head how it breaks out, but I know it's in the staffing standard. So if you go to your big packet, page 10. The staffing standard refers to student enrollment, but a quick way to do it is, if you go to the top of page 10, if you go to Teacher, Art, Music, PE combined total, and look at four per school, so greater than 420 students, and then go down to the grayed-out subbuckets, and look for 420 students, you can see that there's one art teacher, one music teacher, and two PE teachers. Good guess.
Yeah. Wasn't a guess, really. Okay.
Are there any questions about ratios and base teacher staffing for schools? Ratios do differ for middle and high. That's why we have standards at by level. I think I have, is it sped? Oh, let's go over tiered services first. So if you keep, if, I'm still on Handout C, and if you go right next to base teachers, you'll see reduced class size, reading specialists, and tiered services. So those three were formerly part of the differentiated staffing that we've tried to make clearer, and to communicate that better, and so that staffing is used consistently across schools. So the reason why you'll see class sizes smaller than 19.39 at Agner Hurt is because they have three additional FTEs to reduce their class sizes. And that's based on a differentiated formula. So on the, if you're on the slide deck, it's 14. Page 14 is an overview of the standards for these tiered services.
Where do these standards come from? Who decides how many FTEs per 200 students or whatever? Where does that base come from?
I can talk of the, for, for this in particular, we had a differentiated formula, and we tried to, you know, not make it a ginormous cost for the school, and say, well, approximately, we think about half of it was used for class size reduction. We wanted to make sure that every school had a reading specialist, based on the Virginia Literacy Act requirements, and then what was remaining was placed under tiered services. So for this in particular, it was a convert, it was, it, there was a cost to it, a significant cost in '24, but we were trying to keep it minimal while still ensuring a reading specialist, which increased the costs. So that was the basis for these standards. Now, before that, I don't know if there's another staff member who wants to speak to that.
I'll try to do a little bit of explanation. Before we went to this division, this type of division, we had a, kind of a bucket of differentiated staffing. And as we would talk to the principals about how they would use their staffing, it was primarily used for these reasons. It was for adding supports for intervention or reading, primarily in reading, and then also looking at how they reduce class sizes. And that means to add another teacher, and then, like here and there, and then also looking at supports like in intervention and, and other types of extra TAs to add extra support throughout the day. And so when we went to the reading specialists, we, in order, we did that with intention to guarantee that every school had that. And so what it does is it puts some tighter parameters on how that staffing is used. I don't know if that answers the question.
I guess my question is, you know, more on a needs-based, if we're talking about, you know, test scores and more need in a school, and we're basing it on, you know, a literacy requirement, and we're saying we're going to put one in every school, but it may be that one school needs three reading specialists or more interventionists. How do we determine that? You know, it's not necessarily a formula. I guess I want to say it's not all math-based.
So-
Well, I'd say, so currently, it's based, it's based on economically disadvantaged students by formula. But we've had conversations around, how do you, how do you create a more dynamic staffing model based on performance, right?
Right. Because it's not necessarily, your econo, I mean, yes, there are correlations, but your economic status does not necessarily mean what we need as far as reading and specialists and interventionist. So it seems like it's more of a needs-based budget decision versus formula.
The first stat, the first stab we took at that was this year with the, except, the schools were calling the accelerated schools. And so what we did, we didn't, we didn't want to keep doing what we'd been doing, which is saying, we got a formula based on economically disadvantaged, and you get what you get. We talked to them and said, what do you need? And they specified different types of staffing, some wanting more intervention, some wanting reading, some wanting more professional development. And so we're, we, we acknowledge that it's not just about, like, the note, what's going into the school, it's also what kind of results are they getting, and we need to make adjustments based on that.
So is that in this, will that be in this year's budget, or have we not gotten to that point where we can actually staff based on what our needs are?
I, I think what you're going to see in this year's budget is, because it's basically flat and worse than flat, is, you know, we can, we can continue to, we can adjust and toggle. And as this, the way we arrived at what we're doing now, like the, the shift that, that Maya and Rosalind and Claire have talked about, where we tried to parse out and be more transparent with the differentiated staffing, that came from conversations with the board, like pushing and saying, hey, we, we think you should do it this way. So I think that's part of what will happen, is like, you'll look at it, and you'll, you know, you all will say, well, have you thought about adding this factor? Or we, if you want to direct us to come up with a different factor that you want us to bring forward, we can do that too.
Okay.
So I think that's where the exciting part happens with the budget development, with the board, is your, your vision for how you want to make changes. Because we wouldn't be inventing the wheel, there are other places that do that kind of, do that approach a little differently than what we've been doing. The differentiated model's been in place for, I mean, I don't know, like, since like the 90s, early, even prior to the 90s. And it was novel at that time. It was like, really? You're going to not just stay staff based on numbers, you're going to take into account this other factor? And so we've been slowly trying to make changes to it without totally breaking it, because it does make sense too.
I, I think that moving away from just the one, just, well, just the one factor, the economically disadvantaged, is something that we've talked about at, at all the, all the budget meetings that I've been to for four years, and the ones that I went to when I was running. So what I'm very excited about now is that that seems to be taking hold a little bit. So I'm saying that the most positive way that I can.
Yeah, I think that it's going to be necessary. It, it, it has to happen in order for us to see some, like, real change in a lot of these areas that I feel like we're taking, we, the collective we, the school division is taking hits on things. That's where we really have to put that focus. And if it means moving things around because we have limited resources, then that may be what needs to happen, because, you know, we've got a lot, we, yeah, there's just a lot that we've got to, you know, fix.
I'm, I'm just curious, on the elementary level, under reading specialists, I think we, we're all kind of focusing a little on that. We have five half-times in there, if you count them all up. I mean, I'm just curious as to how many of those are full-time teachers that are splitting schools? Do you have any idea? Or halftime people that want to be halftime?
So first, I'll speak to why we have halftime, you'll see all these decimals. This is really a budget exercise, so while we have, we provide these allocations to schools, we are not saying, oh, you must, this must be a halftime position, this must be a .32 position, this must be. I'll turn it over to Claire about how these decimals get turned into real people.
And that, excuse me, and that's a little bit of a dynamic piece, because it really is, each school has kind of several different buckets of funding, like, that would, could potentially add to that reading specialist piece of it. So the primary things that you see in, at the elementary level is you see that allocation for a reading specialist, or a .5 reading specialist, or whatever that is. And then sometimes in, not sometimes, but we also have in our Title I schools, additional staffing that is provided to provide supports like that.
Right.
And so our Title I schools may have an additional, you know, 3.5 or whatever, that is attached, that in most cases is used for reading support at this point. And what happens is, we go through staffing meetings, and we've, we've just started these, and we, the principals come in with plans, and that's where we really hear exactly what you are, all are talking about, in that, that desire to, you know, they, they know their students, they know their schools, they know the programming that they really need, and they know what type of staff they need to support that. And so, while we've got, we've got the, here's the amount, in most cases, the, they'll do full-time teachers, sometimes it might be a full-time teacher, it might be a person who's staffed partially through reading and doing that for part of their time, and maybe they're a part-time Title I reading teacher, so that gets them to a full-time position. In most of those types of positions, they are usually within single schools. We also have, we do have staff members who want to work part-time as well, and so sometimes if there's a, like, a half of a FTE for it, they may be staffed that way. Where we often see cross-school types of things is where I, I think about some of our specialist areas, like in elementary art and music, for example, a person might be a .4 at one school and a .6 at, at the other, and we really work hard to try to put, put positions together so that people can have full-time positions. We know our hiring pools are, are deeper when we do that, and we have people who are interested in, in doing that type of work. We also have people that would just say, I want to work part-time at a school, and, you know, so there really is a, a kind of a dynamic piece, and while this gives us some banks on the river, we know that the water flows back and forth a little bit in between those banks on the river.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Yeah, that was the other part I was going to say. The reading part, too, like, if you look at Greer, they have three and a half reading and one and a half tiered services, that, those, the tiered services can also be reading as interventionists, so. And then the other thing I, I thought that just kind of jumped out at me, we did, as part of that, breaking out differentiated staffing, we also uncapped, like, the high schools, because, like, Alamo High School had a cap on the amount of differentiated staffing they were receiving forever, because it just was a lot, and we just took the cap off. And so Dara has three reading specialists at Alamo High School, whereas he wasn't funded any prior to that, it was just a blob of differentiated staffing that was kind of small, and he, he just didn't have it, so. Last year, you, you all really took a big swing at specialized staffing to support kids, in particular, going above and beyond what was required, what is required for VLA.
Well, and I'm wondering, too, just as we're talking about this, you know, when it comes to, like, middle and high school, especially with, like, tiered services and reading specialists, I mean, what I keep hearing is, like, if we don't catch them by fifth grade, then by the time they get to middle school, it's like, well, we don't have enough tiered services, we don't have enough reading specialists, and so then they're constantly behind. And so, like, how do we, again, make it more of a needs-based, based on what the kids need, not based on, you know, well, you know, Burley, you get one, but my guess is Burley probably needs a lot more interventionists than, or two, well, they have two inter, tiered services, but still, you know, I'm curious how we can work that.
So the next slide is about class size, and again, we're focusing a lot on the budget, but the reality of, like, how people are actually staffed and what classes actually look like are different, because there is some discretion for principals to decide. So the budgeted ratio for elementary in '23 was 18.5. This includes reduced class size, that's why those numbers are a little bit lower than what we talked about earlier. FY24 was 18.4, and FY25 was 18.4. Enrollment is one driver of why actual class sizes differ, and another is just how the grade configurations fall, like, how many classrooms are you going to have per grade? It depends on the number of students. And so in '23 and '24, the actual elementary average class sizes was 18.6 and 18.1. These are very close to the budgeted ratios. In '24, it's, there's a bigger difference because of that enrollment drop. We came in under than what was projected. So schools are staffed at a projection, and so when there aren't as many students, you end up with smaller class sizes.
Is there a VDOE requirement, like, that your class sizes have to remain below a certain level?
Just what it says. So it's like.
24.
24, and then, you know, you start getting up higher, and I think the middle schools are.
Okay, so the SOQ right here is what?
Yeah, yeah.
We have to keep it below 24 for elementary.
And then for middle and high, they only just do English, for some reason, I think that was legislation several years ago.
Yeah, we have, as our local standards are much stricter and more defined than what the state has.
And then each fall, what we do is we do a report based on what actually happened, and give it to the board in October, November, and that shows you how it all shook out.
Got you. Thank you. So, next is special education staffing. Again, sticking with Agner Hert as an example, these are the steps that Katie Campell told me that are taken to provide the staffing. So they're standards, they, there are some general standards in the, in the overall handout B, but she actually shared with me some more detailed ones that we don't typically publish in the budget book, starting on page 15, which is the last sheet of paper in the staffing standards. And this is a very specific, what they use to staff the schools and how many FTEs. So if you're interested in the super detailed methodology.
On the last page of the standard.
Last page of the standard.
Of B?
Of B. Page 15, handout B.
Thank you. Okay, got it.
This is a lot, so she has summarized an example at Agner Hert. So you apply, they are a very detailed staffing standards, and then they utilize special education student rosters to determine the number of students for each program, so A base, B base, C base, early childhood. And then they project an initial staffing based on their current number of students. So then, when I talked about having some kind of holdback, it's because they revisit after the kids actually show up to make sure they're appropriately staffed. And so what this results in at Agner Hert is they have one Bright Stars TA, two early childhood special education, one, one teacher, four TAs, two A base teachers, so I'll just make an asterisk here, you will not see these two A base teachers in the staffing allocation sheet, so if you go back to handout C, page two, you'll see some sped categories there. You will not see the A base teachers, because those are now funded in a grant, the IDEA Special Revenue Fund, so those will not show up in our discussion today, but they are funded from a different funding source.
All A base teachers?
All A base teachers, yep. Our, this, eight special education TAs are in this allocation sheet, one B base teacher, two B base TAs, one generalist, and no TAs. So you can see how many students each of those staff are serving. And again, you do have to do some conversion, because if you have two B base TAs, it'll show up as 1.0 FTE in the allocations.
Where's C base on here?
They're all combined, so this, on the, on here, this is all combined under sped teacher, in the sped teacher column on page two of this, yep.
Is that handout C?
Handout C, page two.
So.
But Agner Hert may not have a C base.
That's what I was saying, do they not have a C base?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you might wear on the sheet. So these, both special education and EL require, as you can see from the standard, they're, the standards are a bit more complex, so those are not, those are not left to me, those are left to those people who are in it every day.
Yeah.
Whereas a lot of these other ones are more numbers-based. So the other example is English learner staffing at Agner Hert. It's a very similar methodology, where they look at, well, what are, what is our current need, what is our current student need, what do we project that to be next year, based on patterns and what they know about the community, we've had discussions about that as a school board, and then they round, they round their FTEs. So, for example, for Agner Hert, they're technically by their, by our standard, they would get 3.06 FTE, but we provide 3.0 FTE, since it's harder to add staffing, you know, for EL, it's a very specialized area, so we provide round full-time positions for that. So Agner Hert receives three teachers for EL. Per VDOE, the requirement is two, so you can see the comparison there.
And where does that show up on handout C?
Also on page two, right in the middle, EL teacher.
And some schools listen in. Mary, Red Hill, Scottsville. They have no, not in those positions, are those schools?
I'll take one column over here. Just column here. Yep, you were, you were, one column over. I think every, every school has at least .1.
Except for Crowe Day.
You know?
These highlighted the higher level.
Oh, yep.
Oh, their level, the weed level.
Yep.
Yeah, higher level, they need less.
Yep. So if you exclude those, that's 99, if you include those, it's 109, yes, because they're, I believe, outgoing, but being monitored.
Greer has the highest number of EL teachers.
Correct, yep.
And then Woodbrook.
Mountain View.
Mountain View, yep.
Right?
EL, the EL teachers, English language learners.
Greer, Woodbrook, and Mountain View.
I'm sorry, guys, that is kind of a dumb question, but remind me what our Title I schools are again?
I want to do it by memory. Title I schools.
Title I.
The Title I schools are, Chandra, check me on this one, Agner Hert, Greer, Woodbrook, Red Hill, Scottsville.
Mountain View.
Mountain View.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, we've got all these FTEs. If you go on handout C, you, this is, I'm, I'm simplifying it, but if you go to handout C, in the very last column on page three, you see the total number of FTE by school. So Agner Hert has 62.1. Let's assume that they have 62.1 teachers. We'll get into the differences later. If they're all teachers, on slide 18, this is how we budget for teachers. So we take an average salary cost across all of our teachers in the division for the current year, and that number is 67,687, so that's average teacher cost. We add, and we budget in benefits, FICA, retirement, group life, health insurance, and dental. So the cost of a teacher this year is 94,585. That is the number that we then add to the FTE allocation by school to come up with that FTE budget. Fairly simple. The adjusted baseline is over to the right, that's just to show that we made some mid-year changes, so we had a 2% salary increase and updated calendar year '24 health rates. So those are the costs of an average teacher based on those mid-year adjustments, so that's 96,563. Now, on the second, sorry, on the next slide, page 19, this is how we budget for classified position costs. So we can stay on page three of handout C, because that has a lot of our classified positions in it. So for principals, assistant principals, directors, bookkeepers, nurses, custodians, learning technology integrators, and technical support specialists, we use actual position costs. So we take their individual salary amounts, we assume percentages for FICA, retirement, and group life, we take their actual health insurance plans, because this varies widely from person to person, their individual dental plans, and come up with a budget amount for each person, at one point in time, typically the fall. If there's nobody in that position, because it's a budget, we're going to budget for it, even if there's no one in there, what we do is we take the midpoint of the hiring range, which is an estimate of, well, how much would a new person cost, add in the same benefit assumptions, use a blended healthcare and dental rate to come up with a vacancy rate by position. And again, these get updated. This is a fall snapshot, what we then do is add 2% salaries, and then updated health rates as part of the baseline process.
Can I ask sort of a tangential question? So the 2% mid-year increase is in part the SOQ-funded 2% mid-year increase, right?
Yeah, we discussed it in November, December, and it went into effect this month.
So, and I know that the SOQ only funds, well, like, 67% of our positions, so do they give us just, like, a chunk, and then we can apply it in 2% raises for, I mean, we have to make up the difference, but I guess what I'm asking is, when that happened a couple of years ago, I think we had, like, a $1,000 bonus or something, and it was only for us, you know, 67% of our staff, and we had to make it up, and then some people were saying, like, well, why don't you give some people more, why don't you give some people less? Is there direction on that money when it comes to us from the state?
On the, on the salary increases?
On the salary increases.
There are certain minimum requirements we must meet, and if we meet them, we get the money, but it's, it's just an increase in our revenues.
Okay.
It's, it's usually, you must provide an average of whatever percent they say.
Okay.
So if you, you just show that, on average, you gave that percentage, you can pull down that state money.
Okay.
Yep.
And we move from bonuses to salary because of retirement reasons, right, VRS? Is that correct?
Yep, the salary increases would increase your retirement, but bonuses would not. And a bonus, like in the governor's budget for going into '25, he's got a 1% bonus in there. What that does is, in the FY26 budget, we don't get rebenchmarked with that additional 1%, that goes away, and we go back to the same salary, so that's what makes the difference there. That goes away, and we go back to the same salary, so that's what makes the difference there.
Okay, no question on, just to make sure I'm following this. On the 62 with Agner-Hurt?
Yep.
That's the total beginning with the, with page one where it says base teachers.
Yes.
Then going all the way up.
Yes. So if you go down this total column and you budget for each position, you get to a total FTE, school-based FTE number of 1,903.4. So you multiply that by each of the positions, and you get a school-based FTE budget of 174.7 million. And that is the, what did I say, 63%, 68% of our budget is right there. Any questions on school-based FTEs?
Is the reason that you do the classified position costs so differently from the average teacher cost? Because the range is so great?
That is one reason, and then the other reason is that when we build a budget, we want to budget for, like, if you were to do a per pupil conversion, we want to make sure that we're allocating an equitable amount of resources to each school. So while, yes, some schools may have teachers that are paid more because of their experience, we strive for an equitable distribution. So by budgeting averages, you're saying, hey, we're allocating this much in funding by school that you can kind of connect to the formula. And that way, we, it, I think it's, it should be a goal to try to equalize the cost per teacher, the average teacher cost by school. And the other reason is, for classified positions, a lot of the, from year to year, they don't change as much because they're less driven by enrollment than teachers. And so when there's a lot of change from a year to year, it's very difficult to take away, technically, to take away people and add people when it's not one for one. And so it's just a more streamlined method that hopefully results in fewer errors. So we'll move on to department FTEs, slide 21. These make up about 14% of the budget. So we're going to pull out handout D, which is in the last pocket of your binder. So both the slide and the handout show you our organizational structure, and our department-based budgets are, reflect that of our organization. So our main areas generally overseen by cabinet area include administration, instruction, organizational development, community engagement, communications, strategic planning, operations, and technology. And so the slide shows you, and the handout shows you, which departments, these are budget departments, but also organizational departments, fall under different areas of oversight. The handout also shows you the number of FTE that are budgeted within each department. So in administration, for example, we have two departments, the Office of the School Board and Division Support. The Office of the School Board has 12 FTEs. On page two of handout D, you will see that the cost of those 12 FTEs is 752,580. And if you're curious about what positions those are, that starts on page three. So you'll see Office of the School Board, the list of 12 FTEs, and that grouping equates to 752,580 dollars.
You're a full-time employee? I mean, seriously, isn't that what FTE stands for?
Um.
Full-time equivalent.
Yeah.
You're a full-time equivalent?
I mean, we work that much, we just don't get paid that much.
I will bring that up. It does feel like I work full-time.
It is 100% full-time.
Yeah.
And then some. I know, we get, we're like, yeah, we're basically volunteering.
On the slide, I'm showing the other departments that we have that are not included in this, which includes grant-funded positions like Title I, Bright Stars, those A-based teachers under IDEA, extended day enrichment programs, community education, and child nutrition. So those are, also, we also have FTEs in those area, they're just not captured in this, these handouts and in the slides. So the next slide, 23, is just a repeat of the school-based positions. The same methodology is used here to determine what, how we budget for each of those positions. So this is done position by position. So if you add up all the positions and each of the positions' costs, the next slide will show you the total baseline budget is 36.7 million dollars. Are there any questions about the department FTEs? So I'll turn next to a negative percentage, where about negative 1% of our budget goes towards lapse factor. This is a savings that we estimate because we know that our positions aren't going to be 100% filled during the school year, so we budget in a savings to account for that. We, this, in the budget book, it'll be shown as a department, it's its own department, that's just a negative number. And so the way we do that is we look at historical trends of how much have we saved in salaries, FICA, VRS, health, and dental, and we try to project, well, what's an estimate of what we might see next year? So for FY25, what we've done is, you can see, we've added some more savings than we've had previously to try to get more accurate in our budget management. Our total lapse savings is 3.3 million dollars. And we do add back about $300,000 because we know that's how much we project in, in reclassifications, meaning HR has a cycle in which they review certain positions. I think it's on a five-year cycle to make sure that those positions are in line with the market and make sure no one's lagging. So it's kind of a deep dive, and then look at, and this cycle is also published in the budget book, it's updated each year. So that money is dedicated toward, well, if we're going to look at TAs one year, we can spend $300,000 on getting them up to market if needed. So that's also included in lapse. So the total savings for a 25 baseline is 3 million. And the reason why I put this section in after the FTE budgets, because what we're doing, these percentages you see under FY25 are applied to the baseline FTE budgets that we just budgeted. So that comes first, then we apply a percentage of what we might see in savings next year and come up with the lapse factor.
My, how's, is lapse fact, how's that related to projected fund balance? Like, if you increase what you're saying, perhaps the lapse factor, is part of that, does that bring down your fund balance?
We, we actually budget for lapse factor in the actual, like, if it's salaries, we budget for it in the salary line.
Okay.
So the budget for salaries is decreased by the savings, and so it's all.
But it relates to fund balance in the sense that if your salary estimate, you're not meeting your salary, you're underspending that, you're contributing to fund balance, right? And so if you're not accurate in this lapse factor, right, you're not projecting as much savings as you think you could be increasing or decreasing your fund balance.
Right.
So historically, we have been underestimating or over, you know, a double negative. Underestimating what our lapse factor is, and that's been contributing to an increasing fund balance. So our goal is to not do that because you want to spend the money in the year that you have.
Right, right.
So that's why you're seeing an increased estimate there.
And I, so, and I, I guess, the other question I had was, this, where did you, this is a good prac, I like this practice of capturing the lapse factor and rolling it into reclassifications? How, when did you start doing that? Was that something?
I think that's always, yeah, Jackson used to do it.
Well, I know, at one time, we didn't have a cycle for that, it was just a.
I think there's always been a budget. I think HR has gotten more processed.
Like, there was a squeaky wheel, got the reclassification, and then we built a cycle, so it must have been within the last 10 or 12 years, but that's a great way to do that.
And we do, like, in 22, the reason why it's a little bit less, sometimes we'll use that as a balancing tool. Say, you know what, we can't do as many reclasses because we need to balance the budget. Are we good on lapse factor? Okay. So, section four, we're going to focus on another department called non-departmental. It's 0.5% of the budget. But worth noting, slide 28 shows you exactly what's in this department budget. In the current year, we have a transfer to the Bright Stars Fund. This was to make up for the funding needed that the grant didn't cover. So we wanted, we had all of our Bright Stars classrooms and programs, and that was sort of the gap, so we transferred school funds there. And the same story for special education IDEA. And also for preschool special education fund. That is a grant-funded program that funds a couple of our preschool teachers or TAs. And then the last one on there is a transfer to local government for licensing costs. So we have a lot of shared systems that are owned by the county, and so they charge us for use of those funds. Typically, it's a per-user cost, and they provide us with that amount that they bill us. For the FY25 baseline, we're projecting an increase for the transfer to Bright Stars per the governor's introduced budget. We are planning on not needing the transfer to special education IDEA because we anticipate some carryover funding and a greater reimbursement amount for that grant. And then the transfer to the preschool special education fund is staying the same, and the transfer to local government is also staying relatively flat. So that department budget is 1.2 million dollars in FY25 as a starting point. So the next section, we'll jump ahead to department operating budgets. These budgets make up about 13% of the school fund. Similar to what you saw with FTEs, on handout E, you will see the operating budget allocation. So these are not FTE allocations, but dollar allocations provided to each department. They're organized in this, the slide is organized in the same way as oversight areas, and the operating allocations are listed by department. They also include transfers. Those are handled a little bit differently, and that's why they're broken out. We have, for example, the Department of Technology has a transfer of 3.3 million dollars. That's not money they're expending directly out of their budget, they're transferring it to a special revenue fund, which is our technology replacement fund, and they spend out of there to replace staff and student computers and equipment. VRIP is also handled separately, that's managed at a more central level, not by the department, so it's pulled out. That's the voluntary early retirement incentive program.
Okay.
Payments to early retirees. And so those three categories added up together, the operating allocation, which is managed by each department, transfers, and VRIP together equals the total allocation, or a total operating budget amount of 34.1 million dollars. On the next slide, on 31, this is an example of what an operating budget looks like. So what we do, and to determine what a department's allocation is for the following year, is we use the current year's total budget allocation, and then we take out one-time expenditures. So in the FY24, we budgeted about $2 million in one-time expenditures. If any of that is in departments, we take that out as a starting point. So for Building Services, their starting allocation going into 25 is 10.4 million dollars. So what that department do to build up their budget is they, they have to submit a budget request. They have to stay within 10.4 million dollars, but they may shift because costs change, there are a lot of individual line items that may shift. So if you look closely at the chart, this is comparing the FY24 budget to their FY25 baseline submission. You can see there are slight shifts between categories, but overall, their costs are what their costs are, and that's what was submitted. Anything additional over the allocation, including inflationary increases, have to be requested separately and justified in detail. So the 25 baseline budget does not include increases for inflation or other service changes. So that's what you'll see in, like, the funding request. You'll see, we need X amount of dollars to cover inflation, and that is kind of pulled out separately to show you that is the change from one year to the next. And every department must submit that for each budget line. Questions about operating budgets? So if you add up everything, as I mentioned, that's 34.1 million dollars. So now we have built all of our department-based budgets, that's all filled in. So our last piece is centrally managed school-based operating budgets. That's about 2%, and I'll explain what that is. So we have budgets that are, that show up in school-based budgets. So at Agner-Hurt, for example, they have a small amount of funding that shows up in their, on their budget page in the budget book, but it's not necessarily up to them to manage. They're managed, I call them division allocations. A great example of that is substitute programs. That used to live in the schools, school-managed operating budgets, where principals had to say, oh, no, I'm running out of sub-money. I'm going to need to pull from somewhere else to pay for subs, and that was becoming problematic, especially with the rising costs of subs and the need, the higher need. So what we did in 24 is we moved it to a division allocation, saying, you know what, schools, don't worry about it, we're going to manage at a central level. That way, if there's fluctuations, we can accommodate that. And if there is an increase in subrates, for instance, we can increase that budget as a whole rather than having schools manage that. So the highest budget drivers for these division allocations are substitute budgets, academic leadership compensation programs stipends, and again, VRIP. This is all on handout F, which is just a one-pager in the back pocket of your binder. You can see exactly all of the categories that are included in the division allocations. Most are determined either by formula or by historical trends. And so you can see, school by school, how much is budgeted for each of those.
Why would Greer be so high, Greer and Hollymead?
So that is, so that is for substitutes, that's based on historical spending. So that's just, if there's, have been spending more, we budget more for that to make sure that it's covered.
Sometimes it's just a, I mean, however this sounds, but I know anecdotally, schools will go through a lot of teachers having children.
Yeah.
I think, I'm thinking.
It's just a, like, relatively small school, and such a high.
Yeah, I know they did have a, like, a run on that recently, and I can't, I don't know which year, yeah.
Greer doesn't surprise, I mean, Greer has more staff in general.
And he did have, I do remember recently, there were, there were just. That's usually your biggest.
Because it's your long-term subs.
It's your long-term subs, yeah.
Just anecdotally, that did happen to my kid at Hollymead, too. There was, we were a part of that.
I just wonder, like, how, you know, like, that's just, like, an interesting, like, trend to look into, maybe.
And that's another reason to pull it out of the school.
Yeah, for sure.
So is the, but the full-time sub is not a part of this, that's a part of the other thing?
That's fine, yeah.
But during the year, if a teacher is out on a long-term absence, we will see the savings for that, but then have it in here, so it nets out, so it kind of stays within the budget. And that's why we budget these in the school locations.
One of the things, just, like, a tangent, but one of the things that the board did in the budget this year was you looked at fill rates at schools, like Greer, that was having trouble filling their substitute positions, and you added permanent substitutes to the school.
Did we get feedback on that?
It's going well, yeah. I mean, it doesn't solve the issue of teachers being out, per se, but it makes for a lot better continuity in the school. Which I think ultimately contributes to better teacher attendance.
I've noticed lately that we've had a couple of schools that have 100% attendance.
Yes.
Hollymead.
Hollymead, that's right. Maybe that number will go way down.
Can they get someone to prize or something?
We, we do. What we do is we buy bagels and, you know, bagels and, of course, we didn't have the cream cheese last time, so Joe McCauley drove up to Food Line and got it. But they were excited, we got a lot of nice emails from the teachers thanking us, so. I hope. I hope.
Photos, I mean, yeah.
Of course, right? Photos.
Is that why y'all were talking about having cream cheese tomorrow morning?
Yeah.
Okay. I was wondering why it was a bit...
Because we have our all-in, our all-welcome session tomorrow, we're going to have bagels for that.
It's not in the budget.
It's not.
No cream cheese, no cream cheese.
Take it out, school board says you paid our, our budget.
Taking out the school budget, cream cheese.
You don't get paid anyway, it's fine.
Cream cheese is better than cream cheese. You tried, you tested it?
All right, so we're almost there. The last section is school-managed operating budgets. This is 3% of the budget. I'm going to be referring to Handout G, the last handout for these. To determine a school-managed operating budget, every school starts out with a base budget. So on page one of Handout G, you'll see that elementary schools have a base budget of $27,300, middle have $33,600, and high has $75,600. On top of a base budget, so it's kind of like a base FTE allocation, every school has a principal, every school has a base budget, they're provided a per-pupil allocation. For example, elementary schools get $84 per pupil, and then on top of that, if, for every economically disadvantaged pupil, they're provided an additional $42. So those are the per-pupil allocations. Between the base budget and the per-pupil allocations, this is what you might traditionally call, it's discretionary in the sense that principals can develop their own budget and determine how to spend it. The highest budget drivers for these tend to be supplies and materials, contract services, and copiers. If you flip over and hand out G to the second page, you'll see what's called a program I put a note here for Allison, you had talked about providing funding based on needs. The intervention and the PALS allocations are provided based on tests and results of the students, so that's how those amounts are determined, by formula, based on student performance. And these tend to be used for part-time wages, for additional help. Principals also have the discretion to convert these funds into FTE if they wanted to add intervention FTE to support these programs, or they wanted to make a teacher whole, or this is another area that they can use. Other program allocations are for Bright Stars, CTE, EL Interpretation and Tutoring, Special Education, and Athletics. And then Handout, not Handout G, the next slide just shows you just a graphic view of the school-based operating budgets by per-pupil. You've seen charts like this for total budgets that include FTEs. You'll see similar trends here. The smaller schools have higher per-pupil amounts because of that base allocation, and then the ones that are, have higher economically disadvantaged students will have higher per-pupil because of that per-pupil allocation. As you can see, high schools are a bit higher than the other two levels. Are there any questions about these school operating budgets?
I've never seen them so clearly, so I really appreciate this.
Did you do all of this since the last meeting?
Well, as I said, all the handouts come directly from the budget book, so those have always been there.
You've been the slide.
Yep.
And I recognize them.
I think this is the most in-depth work session we've had on the budget.
It's really helpful, thank you.
I think it was really smart.
I was also thinking, this will help in, like, there have been a lot of questions in the redistricting study about how staffing works, and, well, if we lose kids, what's going to happen with staffing? This gives you an idea of, you get staffing based on the kids, so if we're moving kids, it's all formula-driven, and everything will get adjusted as part of the budget process if there are changes. So that's why it's called a baseline, it's a starting point, and as we have put in our new enrollment projections, or put in new boundaries, everything gets updated.
Very in-depth and super helpful.
So on the next, yeah, this slide just shows you all of the pieces we talked about, the baseline budget amounts. If you add them all together, that equals $257.2 million. And then this is our, as I said, our starting point. So if you want to understand, well, what does $257.2 million mean? In FY '24, adopted, the comparison point is 257.7. So it's very close, but what happens is we're, we projected about $4.4 million based on that 2% and the healthcare, so our new starting, what I'm calling the adjusted baseline, is If you compare the 261.5 million for our adjusted baseline to our adopted number, that's an addition of $3.8 million. So if you want to get a sense of a gap, 3.8 is one starting point, you can add the revenue gap on top of that, and that's without adding anything new. No new proposals, no comp, no healthcare increase, inflation.
So we're looking at, what is that, almost five?
Five, as a, five as a starting point.
Five million-dollar gap.
Without considering, without even, you know, doing proposals, yes.
So fine.
And as I mentioned, in the revenues, again, same with revenues, that's also a starting point, and has, as Mr. Regenball explained, he feels optimistic that revenues might go up, they probably won't go down. So hopefully, you know, we'll get that.
I hope he's right.
Yeah.
He seemed very confident.
I hope so.
Maya, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Maya, it was great.
You outdid yourself.
Yeah, it was fantastic.
If you want to see some of this again, come to the all-welcome session. What did you say?
Really great, thank you.
Are we on? Okay. Thanks very much, Christine. Thank you very much, Maya, and Roslin, and everyone who helped with that, that was very informational. Last thing we have is other business, 10.1, other business by board members and/or superintendent.
I actually have something, and I'm going to be very fast, because I know everyone wants to get home, but this is something that's super personal to me, super important to me, and I think important to the board. You know, I really feel like all students and members of our school community deserve to feel safe and welcomed and included, and with that is included fighting against firearm violence, especially in our schools. And we should be working to avoid the harm and tragedy that shootings of any kind cause in the spaces in which we live, learn, work, play. And so I am really wanting to see us move towards trying to get our community to focus more on safe and secure firearm storage. And, you know, the statistics are staggering, and I'm not going to keep us all here very long, but I think it's really important that we recognize how bad it actually is. Gun violence is the leading cause of death for kids in the United States, more than cancer or anything else, it's gun violence. 76% of school shootings are committed with guns that come from a home. And 80% of firearm suicides by children involve guns belonging to a family member. And 76% of unintentional shootings come from an unsecured gun from the home. But I think maybe the most staggering statistic is that more than 4 million kids live in a house with an unsecured and loaded gun at home, and that, to me, is mind-blowing. So I think that this just illustrates the close connection between our role as families and community members, and caregivers, and guardians, and the role that Albemaro County Schools plays in keeping our kids safe, and keeping our schools safe. And so I would like to move to direct the superintendent and his staff to draft a resolution on the importance of safe and secure guns, and how that pertains to both the students and staff of Albemaro County Schools.
All right, we'll take that as a motion. Is there a second on that motion?
A second.
Moved by Ms. Spillman, seconded by Mr. Page. Is there any discussion on that motion? I think it's great, I know that they're working toward that in the General Assembly, but we don't need to wait for them.
No, I would love for us to be in front of it, and the White House is actually pushing to do the same, so if we can be on the forefront of that, I think it would be fantastic.
Great, well, thank you very much for bringing that up. Can we have a roll call vote on that, Christine, please?
Ms., Mr. Chuck Pace.
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Spillman?
Yes.
Chair Lee? Oh, I apologize, Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Sorry. Chair Lee?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other business from school board members? No?
Ms. Chair Lee, I just have one thing as a reminder for the economic interest forms.
Oh, yes.
I do have copies here if you would like them, if not, you can complete them online, put your electronic signature, and just forward them to me. That's sufficient, I do not need a hard copy.
By February 1st, I think?
Yes, ma'am, February 1st.
February 1st, sorry, Chair, I didn't mean to talk over you.
I found a available form, unfortunately, if you started using it and you'd stop to save, it's locked. So I don't, I don't know if anybody defeated that problem.
So just, like, tuck in, just be ready.
Put your head down and do it.
When you're done, yeah. It is signing a lot of pages, so it does take a long time.
We, for those of us that ran in this past election, we already had to do it once, and now we have to do it again.
We'll have to do it every year. Yay, all right. Thanks for that reminder, Christine. All right, no other business? We are adjourned.